Okay, we'll call this meeting to order for March 6th, 2019.
Good evening, we're very excited to invite Chloe Mason, Grace McGregor, Jackson Cohen, and Ricardo Hernandez up to lead us in the pledge. Good evening, everyone. We have some really nice little awards for you that will come to you at your school, okay? All right, great, are you ready? You start when you're ready. Thank you very much.
That was great.
Great job.
Okay, before we start, I have an announcement. Some of you may already know that the Plastow White YMCA has honored 24 educators at Sanborn and Timberlane Regional School District. And it's called "An Education Celebration," and recognizes individuals who've made an impact in their community. Our superintendent has received one of the awards. Mr. Ambrose, or as we know, we call him Tom, joined the district 2017. It was challenging, shall we say, at the time, but we were trying to get the ship pretty well straightened out.
I like to say festive.
Right? And he has done an excellent, excellent job. He's a guidance counselor by trade at the school district. Where were you as guidance counselor again?
I worked in Waterboro Mean in Scarborough.
He's had many, many, many meetings. I think most of you are aware of this, I'm sure many of you had meetings. Talk about an open door policy. I would say Tom has written a book on how to do that. We're having goals in the next week or so. They should be there. Anyway, doing his commitment to students and the community, Tom has been nominated and has received the Educational Celebration Award from the Plastow Community YMCA. So, congratulations, sir. Okay, so first up is the public forum for the 2019 warrant articles. Now, just to make sure we're all on the same page, this is not the deliberative session. It is not a candidate's night. It is to answer questions or concerns that we, that anyone might have concerning the warrant articles. So if you would please keep your comments to questions and concerns about the different warrant articles, and we will do our best to answer them as we see them. We've already had votes taken, we've already had the deliberative session, everybody knows the votes of the school board, so we would like to move forward. And please, you know, it's that time of year, right? It's that time of year, it's called election year in New Hampshire. So, we're gonna do the best we can and be polite, and hopefully I won't have to do anything that I don't want to do, like say someone is out of order. So, who would like to start with warrant article number one?
I think it's important to note too that, like our forum or the conversation that we had regarding the middle school move this fall, if each person could try to not repeat points that another person has made, if the point's already been made, you could just say, "I concur with the previous speaker." And also, we're just asking that folks keep their comments to three minutes because we have a lot of articles here, and if we all speak to each article, the hour's gonna go very, very quickly. So if your point's already been made, please try not to repeat points that have already been made. You could summarize by just saying that you agree.
Now, the first warrant article is the budget. Budget this year is $35,887,933. The default budget is $35,618,920. We all know how defaults are put together, and if you don't, I'm gonna tell you anyway. And that is, it's done by rule of law, all right? There are things that DRA, Department of Revenue Assessment, tells us we have to put in and not put in. So, the default is put by a very strict formula, all right? So, anyone wanna discuss or talk about the, any members wanna talk about the budget?
Just open it up to the floor and let the public...
Well, I thought I'd give the school board the first shot.
Why? We're gonna answer the question.
Hey, I'm Jim, and I can run it the way I want, no.
Yes, yeah, I stand corrected, I stand corrected.
Anyone from the public got a question on the default or on the budget itself? Okay, one, two, twice? Okay, the next is the teacher's contract. Larry, I know I didn't speak to any of you on this, but you and Jim were on the negotiating team, you wanna put a couple cents in on this?
I spoke about it with the...
Right, no, I know that, but I thought tonight, you know, some things that you may or may not know is, it is negotiations between two parties. One of the things the teachers gave up, when I say give up, one of the things we discussed was their medical insurance will be decreasing by 1%, am I correct?
For each year.
The first year and 1%.
This year and 1% next year, you know? So it is negotiations, it's not, you know...
Our contribution of it will be decreasing, theirs will be increasing.
Right, right.
So it's 90% now, it'll be 89% and then 88%. And I did, I just wanted to mention that we did, we had those, the comment box at the deliberative, and some folks did drop some notes in there, and there was a question about this article that I'll just read out loud so that... Folks wanted us to review any changes to the teacher and support staff contracts, salary-related and other major changes. The major changes really are with regard to the insurance and the salary. The content negotiations are confidential because they're not voted on by the public. The public can only vote on the costs, the increases. The part about the insurance affects that because it decreases the district's contribution to health insurance, so it offsets the total amount, which is why that information's being shared. So that's pretty much what we have. I do think it's important to note that on the teacher's contract, that the raise for year one was, correct me if I'm wrong, Michelle, but it was 1.75% plus steps. And that combined with the change in health insurance was a total of $508,964. And then, year two was $529,794, and that also includes another 1% decrease in the district's contribution toward the insurance. Larry and Jim, did I summarize that?
Okay. Questions?
Tom, one more question, I think you should add to that one information. Is it possibly the total number of teachers that we're talking about for this? Because it sounds like, y'all, it's...
Yeah, it's, I believe it's at 1, Michelle's at 175.
175.
175.
Yeah, and that increase is an estimate based on that number of teachers.
Right, right. It's a complex process because the steps in the matrix, some people get more one year, some people get much less, and it just depends on your longevity and experience, which is typical of all school districts. That's just the way the system is set up.
Article five...
Did you wanna give the public an opportunity?
I did, I'm sorry. Oh, oh, no, it was a wave, okay. Article five, "Shall the Sanborn Regional School District of Article Four is defeated?" Turns out, if we do not have that warrant article and it is defeated, we cannot have a public meeting to reconsider it. So the statute requires us, if we're going to have another meeting, if it's defeated, to put this in. It doesn't mean we'll have another meeting if it's defeated, but it means that if we didn't have that article there, we could not have a meeting, all right? So that's...
They have to wait till the next school district meeting.
Yes, yes, but why that warrant article is there...
If we, if, let's say, the board and the union renegotiates a new contract in several months ahead of next year, you can hold a meeting before then, otherwise you have to wait the full year.
Right, right, so that's why we put that one in. Okay, support staff, do you have any questions on the support staff?
I did not have any specific...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Did you have a question? Sure.
Hi, Cheryl Gannon from Kingston. Would that meeting only be appropriate if there was something that was going to be renegotiated? You couldn't have a meeting just because that was voted down and present the same contract again?
I'm gonna assume that if it's put down, that the union, the association, is gonna wanna sit down with the school board and say, "What can we do about this? We need to negotiate this, what can we, how can we have it?"
Yeah, there would be no purpose if there wasn't a change.
And would that change, you may not know this, but would that specifically be or primarily be about the cost and other things in the contract would not be negotiated, or would they be?
Can't say.
Or be available to...
I believe this, I believe when it comes to negotiations, you cannot just pick, take one specific thing, you take the negotiations, all right? And I believe that's negotiating law, you can't just say, "We're only gonna negotiate this." It's kinda like, you know, you open it up, you open it up.
The assumption is that the amount was too much for the voters, so everything goes on the table at that point. You have to renegotiate the whole contract all over again. But the purpose of having that article is so that, let's say the board and the union come to an agreement in six months, then we should go back to the voters in six months, as opposed to waiting that for you. That's the whole purpose, but everything is open for discussion.
So the timeline, if for that meeting, there is no particular timeline?
Nope.
If that were renegotiated in, let's say, six months from the, from March, and a meeting was held, when would that, and it were to pass, when would that new contract begin? Would they have to wait to another school year, or would those negotiated changes be going to effect immediately?
I think Cory's run into that.
I actually have run into that, and when you get into a deadlock of the such that you're describing, like, could that deadlock be a month, a six month, 18 months even, multiple years? Once that deadlock does occur, ultimately, they'll be negotiating parameters that will be part of that negotiating, they'll say, "Is this retroactive too?" So, those mitigating factors would come up as well.
Okay, thank you.
Cheryl, Jim?
That would, that, from what everybody said, is something that you would, ideally would be the case, but it's not required that you renegotiate to have that additional hearing. It's not required by the warrant. It just says you can, and you can for any reason. It would, it doesn't make a lot of sense to have it again if you don't have a different deal, but you still can, you're authorizing that to be, to happen if the school board decides to do it.
Ask the people at Brexit.
Yeah, yeah.
I wonder if it could be strictly consideration on Tuesday's ballot?
I think I jumped ahead, so let's go back to the support staff, did you have any?
I did not have any specific questions, except the first question did say, "Please review changes to the teacher and support staff contracts," so I'll just talk about the support staff. As you can see, the estimated increases for the support staff contract are significantly less, but in a similar percentage. It is important to note also that the support staff contract also has a reduction in their healthcare costs, or the healthcare premium to the district. And if you notice, because of failed contracts in the past, we had to negotiate teachers and support staff this year, so you'll see that in Article Four, there's a two-year agreement, and in Article Six, it's a three-year agreement so that it would be staggered in the future, which would really, really helps everyone to, it's very difficult to negotiate two or three contracts at the same time. It's just a lot, a lot of hours on both ends for the union and for the administrative and for the board, so we're hopeful that if these pass, we'll have a staggered process from this point forward.
Article seven is pretty much the same as Article Five. Article Eight, "Articles Agreement Between Towns of Newton and Kingston," or Kingston and Newton. "Shall the Sanborn Regional School vote to amend Article Three of the Articles of Agreement between the towns of Newton and Kingston and delete the word 'elementary' from the sentence? Elementary schools shall be maintained in Kingston and Newton." Now, please, if I'm wrong on this, straighten me out, because this gets a little confusing sometimes when I hear you say it. As I understand it, the law, the RSAs, say elementary school is one to six. K to six, sorry.
K or one, yep.
Yeah, K or one to six. Guess where R six is? To Newton? The Articles Agreement said, elementary school, statute says one to six, R K to six.
Or K to eight.
Or K to eight, yeah. Well, I didn't wanna get into, I'm trying to use it just as Kingston and Newton has it, so I hope I don't confuse them. So what we're really trying to do is make it so that what we've been doing for many years is now allowable to be done, and that is change the wording that, so that it wouldn't be in violation of the law, is that a way to put it?
In conflict.
In conflict with the law, there we go, see? You can tell a writer by profession, right? Okay. So this is, to me, you know, this is to me, kind of a housekeeping thing, because it's not really gonna change anything. Everything's gonna be just like it is on Wednesday, as it is on Tuesday before the election. Anyone wanna say anything on that one? Jim?
Yeah, that's part of it. The other part of it is that without that warrant, the school is locked in to the current situation, or we can move the sixth grade, have a sixth grade in each elementary school. But we can't do anything else. And we had the study done by the NASDAQ group that came up with a whole different, a whole bunch of possibilities. And a lot of those have some real good potential to improve the academic life of the students because of different kinds of teaming that can be done, all kinds of different arranging that can be done where kids in slight grades are together. But we can't look at any of that, we can't, we can't invest any resources in that. It just doesn't make any sense to do that kind of planning if that isn't an option. So that's the other part of that warrant.
So before we open it up to the public, because I have a feeling we'll have a lot of questions on this one, I would like to say that there was a question that was put into the box at the deliberative, and it said, it was more of a comment than a question, it said, "I would like to see the administration and board make a promise to the residents of Newton and Kingston to allow us to vote on any changes to the current grade structure and configurations." So I just wanna acknowledge that comment. And I also wanted to just say that people have asked me directly, "Why, why isn't, why isn't the board, or why aren't you giving us a plan before asking us to potentially vote to change the Articles of Agreement? We kinda don't feel comfortable approving this without having a clear plan." And I just wanna remind everyone that, you know, this fall, we did present, NASDAQ presented many different potential options for our district that could be looked at, and it's really complicated because it takes, it costs thousands of dollars and hundreds of hours for us to investigate any one option. So currently, I'm investigating the move of seventh and eighth grade to the high school facility and grade six staying in the elementary schools, and I want you all to know that that process has been daunting. It is very, very time-consuming for administration, teachers, everyone involved, and there have been costs associated with it because you can't make decisions without getting architectural opinions on, and accurate information regarding the costs of any kind of construction that may need to occur, to accommodate a change. So I just want everyone to understand that it's a fine line between transparency and fiscal, fiscal reasonableness. Personally, I would, I would struggle with asking our leadership and our schools to spend the hundred-plus hours that it would take to investigate any one of those options if the Articles of Agreement are not, it's not even feasible at this point. So, I understand that it's a big ask in terms of trust, and I understand too, you know, the will of the community will be made clear through the vote, but I just want all of you to know that there's no intention by the administration or the board to try to get people to agree to something without knowing a plan. The point is that it costs a lot of money to investigate the plan, and if the Articles of Agreement aren't changed, I don't really feel that I can ask my administrative team to spend the tremendous amount of time that it would take to investigate one of those plans if it's not even a viable option. Right now, changing our structure K-5 is not an option by law, because the Articles of Agreement bind us to have a K-5 and technically a K-6 school in each community. Until that's changed, I don't feel like we should be spending time on that.
Questions? I knew there'd be one, I was gonna say, surprise me if there weren't any.
Annie Collier, Newton. Thank you for addressing the time thing and how it opens up possibilities to be studied. There was a letter to the editor in today's Carriagetown News that said that the state wouldn't prevent us from doing that, and that's absolutely true, and appreciate that you made that clear. The other thing that was said in this letter was that the possibility could exist for elementary children to have to commute as much as 45 minutes each way every day. And my question is, and I don't know if you have the answer to this, but I'd really like to find out what it is, is what is the longest any child commutes to get to the high school? Because that would pretty much tell us what the longest commute possible would be.
Well, it, Michelle is actually researching that, so I asked her to do that because you had talked to me before, so we don't have an answer yet. I just wanna be very factual in this answer to make sure that it's accurate, and I do know that we have some bus runs that approach 40 minutes, but I wanna be clear that the current bus runs do not mean that those are the future bus runs, because the reality is, is that if we say to the bus company, "We don't wanna run longer than 30 minutes, what will that cost?", then they will create bus runs that are 30 minutes. That's up to us as a team. There's no, there's no, the only time that it could be challenging is for the furthest end of Kingston to go all the way to Newton, which is about five minutes more than going to Bakersfield. So, I mean, really, if you drive from Bakersfield to Memorial School, that's the difference. And so to be accurate, the difference is driving from Bakersfield to the Memorial School. But again, we're getting into the weeds here because anyone who says that someone, I didn't read the article in the newspaper, but I'm certainly very concerned that misinformation, as you all know from my Facebook posts, I don't like misinformation. I don't get into the sides of things, who agrees with what, I don't wanna get into that, but I do want facts out there, and the fact is that we haven't even researched this yet. So to say that it's gonna be a 45-minute ride is just a scare tactic, because the reality is, is that we dictate to the bus company what we want the rides to be, and then we pay for that. So the cost differential is the key.
Also, it's different for different grade levels. It used to be, I don't know if it's changed, it all in the last 20 years, but what, the length of time, the maximum on an elementary school student versus a high school student is different. So, until you know what the current regs are, there's no way anyone can answer that question.
And the other thing I will say too is that I'm really aware that conversely, we have some kids right now that go from Newton, they actually are so close to Bakersfield that they're riding a way longer distance to go to the Newton Elementary School than if they just went to Bakersfield, it's right there. So we have to...
And vice versa.
And vice versa, yeah, it's, the reality is, is that we have to, we have to decide, we have to deal with the middle school issue first and take things in steps, and then we really have to have a conversation about the fact that we have five campuses and 1,600 students, and that is a lot of ground to maintain. The house is very big for the size of the family, and the money is going to the house and the facilities instead of the needs of the students academically. And I've said that from the first, my first entry plan summary, that that's a major concern, and all of these studies have just continued to validate that concern.
Thank you.
Yep.
I just wanna add, in that article was also the speculation that Newton could end up with no school. And the warrant itself specifies a school in each town, so that is, that's, you know, just wrong.
I have more of a statement than a question, this is Kelly Culligan from Newton. If we didn't get the Articles of Agreement passed with taking the word "elementary" out this year, and we had to revise it for next year, and just hearing from other parents that they're very afraid that they're going to lose their neighborhood elementary school, it would be maybe a thought from the board that you might want to revamp the article to say that both Newton and Kingston will remain having a K through five school in each town. That way, you can move sixth, seventh, and eighth, hopefully, to the high school and not move sixth back to the elementary schools and overrun them. I think that, if you had worded it that way from the beginning, I think that a lot of parents would have been okay, but I think that they were panicking that they were going to lose their schools, we were gonna do K through two and three through six, and that they were just getting very nervous. So that's just a suggestion of something that might be able to be done next year, if that's something that you all discuss and decide that it's something you wanna move towards, just a suggestion.
Want me to take that and respond, or do you want...
We haven't even...
Yeah.
This is a little bit new to me, because we haven't even discussed anything like that, you know? Well, see, this is what hap, yeah, this is, sure, you know, you know, I say something, somebody else says something, something, before you know it, it's the truth. You know, tonight I was doing an interview, and one of the statements I said was, "Something that is untrue that's said 99 times doesn't make it the truth 100 times," you know? And unfortunately, someone thinks something, they put it out there, because this is, that's new to me.
I thought if it was on Facebook, it was true.
See, I don't get the Carriagetown...
So, so I just want everyone to know, I read everything on Facebook. I don't comment, but I read a lot of it. Except, except if Pete wrote something, I wouldn't read them. But no, I just, I think it's so important for everyone to understand, we, over the last 10 years, these are just facts, this isn't an opinion, we have lost 400 students in 10 years. We are projected to lose another 400 students. If, if for some reason Fremont chooses not to stay a part of our district when their contract expires in six or seven years, everything is on the table.
Has to be.
It has to be, because we can't run, we can't run three or four buildings for 1,200 students or 1,000 students. So I don't wanna, just to answer your point, Kelly, the NASDAQ study made it clear that some of the options for us as our enrollments decline is to change the layout of our elementary schools. And so I would not be comfortable putting anything out, even in this moment, just sitting with that idea that we may never have to talk about K-5 or having one building be K-3 and another building be 36, that is on the table. I just wanna be transparent, but we're not there yet. Right now, for the next two years, we're just talking about seventh and eighth going to the high school, because, and that will be presented in early April, right? I hope. We're close to being ready to present that, what that would look like.
Still, I understand why that would be an option, sixth, seventh, and eighth should stay together.
But, but that, that's not, so my point though is that I don't wanna debate that, right? What the board asked me to do was to examine seventh and eighth going to the high school and keeping sixth grade at the two elementary schools, and honestly, I'm not going into the details of that study until I'm ready to present it, and I don't wanna go any further with that, but we'll have a public forum like this when that's presented, and everyone will have an opportunity to talk about it once you see the plan.
When a consulting company, and we, if somebody says to a consulting company, "Give me options," they give you options. You dismiss them as soon as you read some of them, but they're supposed to give you options. You know, it's kinda like somebody says something, you dismiss it right out of hand because, you know, that's not gonna work, but it's still their responsibility to give you options, and I think that clouded the issue, because we've had no discussions that I can think of about closing any... Because we've had no discussions, and I can think of, about closing any elementary schools.
Nothing.
And if you look at sixteen-hundred students in the entire district, lose another four hundred and then lose the hundred-and-fifty or so-
No, two, two-hundred-and-fifty.
Two-hundred-and-fifty from Fremont, you're talking, you know, a thousand kids for the whole district. But that's, that's, even that possibility would be years down the, well, be careful what you say, right? What else we got here?
Hi, Roger Susi from Kingston. Is it true that the Board does not require a public vote on making changes to the elementary school grade structure if the, if the word "elementary" was taken out?
That is true.
Okay, so with that, the second part of my question is, isn't it then not understandable why people would be concerned about giving you the authority to make those changes without having a clear and concise plan as to what those would be? So, you're asking people to effectively give you the, the authority to do that without public vote on any changes that you would, in effect, decide were, you know, what you'd like to do? I think that may be the biggest challenge.
I'll try to answer it this way. We pretty much know what you know, because the superintendent hasn't given us word one about recommendations. All right? So, we don't know. He is putting together an entire packet on this. So, we don't know what options, possibilities, move here, build this, move that, do some. We haven't got one, because it takes him, you know, I mean, you're talking to a major. I was a facilities manager in a company. I've moved buildings, you know? It's huge project. So, we haven't even got word one from recommendation one.
My opinion of this is redistricting for success in the future is gonna require all of us to converse about it. And I recognize that you don't have faith in the board for many other mitigating factors that have occurred, Facebook, elsewhere, wherever it may be. And you're trying to assure that there's faith in us as a board, that we're gonna do right by you, who have elected, that's all in. Quite frankly, you are right to ask those questions, and you should be concerned. But I look at the board that stands today as a functional board, should hopefully be able to stay functioning in your best interest. So, ultimately, I cannot put a warm and fuzzy bow around this answer, other than the fact the matter is, you voted us in, and these public forums that has been occurring underneath this functioning board will be maintaining. And none of us here wanna make any decisions without your input.
Right. To say that I don't have faith in the board is an unfair assumption, for one.
Fair enough.
I'm just trying to clarify why people, such as myself, do have concern over Warren Article VIII in removing the word "elementary", because it does open up the potential for changes in the school system without a further vote on it. And since we don't know what we're voting for. And while we may have the, the word of the board today that they wouldn't do anything without public input, it's not legally required, so people that I'm looking at sitting around this table, these groups of tables, won't always be here. And people that fill those seats may not hold the same values. So, that's just something to bring up.
I'm gonna give you my personal concern. Annie touched on it. She said to doubt the state would come down and make us change it. I was sandborneized when I taught here. Who would've thought that a contract, a multi-year contract, would've been taken to the Supreme Court by people of this community because it was a multi-year contract and it wasn't told to the people it's a multi-year contract? So, I'm using that for my example. If some people in this community, even though the state wouldn't make us do it, were to go to court, well, you decide whether they'd have a case or not, and we'd be forced to. I don't know whether it would not, but I do know that, from what I understand, the rule is this, and we're not in compliance with the rule. I'll let you decide that, and now we lose control. I don't know. I mean, it's a question, isn't it? It's an academic question we can discuss from now until, you know.
I just wanna acknowledge your concerns, and, and we crafted this warrant article to begin this conversation. If, if it doesn't pass, we need to bring it up again. But the reality is, is that after meeting with people for hundreds of hours over the last sixteen months, and that is not an exaggeration, what I heard were two things. "My taxes are too high, and the kids aren't learning. Why?" And the answer is, we are putting the majority of our money into facilities. We can't do the same thing over and over again and expect a different result. And so, we have to decide. If the will of the community is to leave the two elementary schools K-5, then my answer to you is, that costs money, a lot of money. No problem, I'm happy to do it. If the will of the community is to reorganize and use the resources to help academics, I'm happy to help you with that, I know how to do that. I need you as a community and the board to tell me what to do as the superintendent to lead our school district in the future. My goal is to educate you as to what your options are as a community, and whatever the will of the community is, I'll support you. Right? So, I just wanna demystify, there's no hidden agenda here. It's totally transparent. The NASDAQ study gives you all the possible options, and everything attached to it, it's right on the website. It's been presented at multiple public meetings. If anyone would like to talk to me about that study, I'd be happy to talk about it. But we didn't wanna attach a specific plan to this warrant article because, A, that would be binding, and, and we don't know what's gonna happen with enrollments, even with an excellent study. Enrollments are dynamic in nature. And B, we want you as a community to understand that it takes time and money to research the options, and we do not wanna waste any of our valuable resources on that if it's not even possible. So, it's three things. One is what Pete said, that we're out of compliance. Number two, we have enrollment issues, which is driving up our per pupil cost. And number three, we have a problem where we have more facilities than we really need. Right? So, it's really not, that's why it's so hard to understand, because it's a multi-pronged problem.
I think everybody actually understands that.
Good, good.
I would recommend that. Maybe one way to mitigate some of the public's concern, fortunately, if Warren Article VIII were to have provided the ability for the public to vote on any changes that the board would like to affect, that would've alleviated a lot of the concern with removing the word "elementary" out of the agreements between the towns. Without that, I think that's the biggest concern that puts people-
Thank you.
-on, on edge.
I, I have one comment, timing. We don't have a strategic plan, and not only that, but nor did we actually have the NASDAQ study. NASDAQ study. The NASDAQ study and the other information backing it. So, in order to actually craft a plan and actually go to the voters in a timely fashion-
I'm not saying a plan at this point. I'm saying at least state that a, any plan or effective change would have to go to vote. That's all.
All this needs to go through a strategic planning process, though, with all, everyone here in this room-
Sure.
-and those who are not.
Yeah.
With all those studies and all the data points informing the discussions, so which then decisions are made.
Yeah.
So, it's timely.
Yeah. I would love to meet with you, please give me a call.
Yeah, okay.
I'd love to sit down and talk. Thank you for sharing.
Yes.
Come on down.
Good evening. Jim McCarthy from Newton. I have a, kind of a statement to make to, to Mr. Broderick. I believe that we have a quantity of students that we plan to move from the middle school to the high school. And that has been-
Well, we don't plan to, we don't even have the plan yet.
Oh, well, it's been an option in several of the NASDAQ studies to move-
It's, it's one of the options, yes, I'll go with it.
So, so, this is kind of addressing the quotation for getting a budgetary quote for doing some of this stuff. Now, we're expecting, I'm expecting that the, moving the students up to the high school is gonna be one of the options that come down to the last question for the people. Why is it that you can't get the head count for the number of students you're gonna, the maximum number of students you plan to move up here? The quantity of open rooms here at the high school. Figure out where you're going to put them, and figure out what corridors you're gonna block off for the separation or segregation of the younger students from the older students. Along with that, also get quotes for crash doors, because you're gonna need crash doors in each one of those hallways to get brought, that get blocked off that crash in each direction in case there's a fire. I was at a birthday party over the weekend, and I've been asked this, I was asked this over the birthday party. "I'm a general contractor, and I'm an electrician, two gentlemen. Is there a chance I could go quote for what has to be done at the high school?" Those people can come in here and look at the plans for where you're gonna locate those crash doors and whatever else you might need to make changes to, and give you a budgetary quote, which gives you an idea. And it's not gonna cost you anything. So, I don't understand how we can say that to go out and do any research for any of the stuff for the schools is gonna cost the taxpayers too much money.
Okay, I, I just wanna put the pause on this. Sure. This warrant article is not about the middle school move. Okay? This hearing, this forum is not for the middle school move. When I present the plan that we've spent six months creating, the board asked us to create a plan that outlines everything that you just said.
Yeah, I was gonna say, everything you're saying.
You're one-hundred percent correct, okay? Except, there's a lot more than what you said. Right, and you'll see it when the plan's presented.
I was just talking more about for the high school.
We'll, we'll have a public forum after the plan is presented, where you'll be able to ask questions about that plan. But I can't, I can't comment on that this evening.
But that's not gonna be able to happen until after the vote.
Yeah, but this article doesn't affect the move of the middle school. The school board can move Seventh and Eighth Grade to the high school without this warrant article.
Correct, but you're not gonna leave the Sixth Grade in that school, in the middle school right now.
No, they will go, the, the, what the, okay, so, I just wanna help to-
We don't know.
Information-wise.
Yeah.
In the fall, the board has asked me to have the administration study moving grades Seventh and Eighth to the high school facility and keeping the Sixth Grade students at the elementary schools. I will be presenting, i- i- at this point, it's thirty-something slides about that plan with everything that you just talked about.
Right.
So, there are costs, because we have to create a locker room. There are costs for creating bathrooms in the wing, because they have to have a certain number of bathrooms per student by law.
And they have to be handicapped accessible.
I, I am not going into this anymore tonight, because it's totally off-topic. But I'm saying the plan is coming out, and we will have a public forum for that, and I really hope that you'll be there. Right, so that you can, because what we'll do is, we'll give you the plan, you'll have a chance to read it, digest it, think about it, develop questions, and then, a couple weeks later, we'll have a public forum for questions about that plan. But I just wanna be clear that, that that has, at, the only part that that's connected to this warrant article is that currently Bakersfield School is out of compliance with state law. Bakersfield School is supposed to be K-6 right now by state law.
Good.
And it's not. No one's making an issue of it, but if they did, we could have a problem.
Right. Just kinda snowballs into where I was going with that.
Yeah, no, I just want you to have accurate information.
Everything you said, in my mind, I was going, yes, yes, yes.
Yep, yep, you're right on.
All of that and much more is gonna be brought in.
Well, I, it's just kind of overwhelming for a lot of people to sit there and go, "We spent all this money on the NASDAQ study, and they came back with zero for what it's gonna cost to do anything to any of the schools." Nobody's heard anything.
That's so, that's completely inaccurate.
That's what Pete, that's the impression that people have. All strictly based off of that Article of Agreement. Removing that word "elementary" has driven, that's why I brought it up.
So, so whoever-
Their concerns for the elementary word snowballs into the high school.
I hear you, and I, and I understand that.
That's why I brought that up tonight.
Um, and that's why I posted twice a very clear document that has all the hyperlinks to all the pertinent information for this matter to help the public understand. And it, not only does the, does it explain the article, it explains the whole process and links to all the different studies. And if you don't have a copy of that or anyone who doesn't understand, I'd be happy to share it with them, just email me. Because I've sent it out in constant contact, I've put it on Facebook, but that doesn't mean I'll reach everybody.
No.
So, I'd be happy to share that with anyone who doesn't have access to it.
Is there a chance that that could get shared through the elementary school emails that go out?
Sure, I'd be happy to do that.
I think that would reach the elementary school parents.
Yep, great idea.
Definitely would, and help out.
I would be happy to do that, I'll do that in just a few minutes.
Two things. For the record, I feel like we should have the present speaker and the prior speaker state their name for the record.
Oh, thank you.
Um, and- Can I make a suggestion? No, 'cause like, I recognize there's fear here.
Oh, we all do.
And, and I believe what would make sense is after next week's vote, I'm just throwing this out there to the fellow board members, would it make sense and would the community appreciate if the next standing board, if so, I'm removed, makes a vote to not make a decision without the public's input? So, the board would-
We would have public input.
No, do you follow, do you, I'm making a suggestion. I feel as though there's an awful lot of fear that there's gonna be some course of action taken by the board without the public's input. I'm hearing that, maybe I'm wrong, am I, it's-
I, I hear that, but-
So, I'm saying is, could we handcuff ourselves almost and by actually making a vote to not make a decision without X information presented to the community?
I think that's gonna happen anyways.
I was gonna say, Corey, I've been on the board now, this is only three years, but I cannot think of any issue that we haven't put out there.
I agree, but-
So, we're gonna stay in, stay as far as I'm concerned, we're gonna stay the course.
Okay, hi, I'm, I'm Tammy Gluck from Newton. So, this warrant article in, I think, the superintendent kind of alluded to it, where all things, all items could be on the table, and all discussions will be presented and given to the community to evaluate. But this, this article kinda relates to, I think, something I heard Mr. Mason say, is the need for a strategic plan. And the superintendent, I'm hoping through this next board will, will be charged with, or maybe is working on now, a strategic plan, because we've had one, and it's still in effect. And, and one of the biggest pieces of this next strategic plan, whether it's a five-year or a ten-year, I'm assuming it's a five-year, is Fremont. And that is a huge card that we haven't talked about.
Thank you, but I, I, I'm trying to, I'm trying to see how that relates to this warrant.
Well, how does it relate? Because, because of this warrant article and changing the, the word and getting rid of elementary and making K-through-six or moving schools, redistricting-
It's not moving schools.
Moving students within, within our buildings and schools.
No.
No?
This is, to me, maybe it's me.
Okay.
This is simply to clear up the wording to stay in compliance with the law.
But it also opens the door.
But, it opens the door for all of the fear, all the fear that you're hearing here. And a strategic plan that is presented to the community that would outline what is this superintendent, what is this board thinking about and planning would help the community have more faith, I'm gonna use that word, in whether it's the, the, how many of you? Seven of you sitting here now? Or a little difference in who's sitting at this table? And, and all of those things, there is, there is, I'm gonna call the elephant out, out in the room right now. There is a four-to-three split for every major decision that this board has made over the past year and a half. Okay? So, when it comes time to vote on Article One, which is an article in this public forum, we're gonna, we didn't, I don't know if we discussed that, I was a little late. Article One is, who are you going to elect? So, the public that's listening tonight needs to think about who they're going to elect to sit in these seats, to represent them moving forward and making decisions for our school district. That's all I wanna say.
Okay, thank you.
I don't think that's actually true. Anecdotally, I haven't looked in, through the minutes of every single major vote that this board has taken, but I am, I feel fairly confident in saying that it has not typically been a four-to-three split vote.
Can we help you, ma'am? Hi.
Karen Campbell Newton. So, forgive, forgive me, I'm a little nervous, but so I-
That's okay.
So, forgive, forgive me, I'm a little nervous, but, so I, thank you for making the recommendation that there's fear in the room, because that is, that is true, and that does where I'm coming from. So I can respect the fiscal needs of the community to have to redistribute resources. Where I'm having a really hard time is when I hear the present board members say we're currently out of compliance. Because when I pull up the state law, 18925, which it's a paragraph, and I could read it for you, but I'm really gonna summarize here. An elementary school is any school that's K through eight. However, junior high school can be seven through nine. However, a separate middle school can be grades four through eight. Hence therein, elementary school for each town only has to be K through three. We're not currently out of compliance.
No, we are, I have a legal document from a lawyer that outlines that. Now, I'll pull it up in a moment and clarify.
Cause isn't the RSA.
I really appreciate that, yep.
Well, so, so thank you for clarifying, so that's what I need to hear.
Yep. I'm happy to help, and I'm glad that you brought it up.
Well, you do that, Larry.
Yep, I'll pull it up, just give me one moment.
Actually, what I'm just saying is, we're not in, we are in compliance with the state law, but we are not in compliance with the letter of agreement found by the two towns.
So the, the letter of agreement, when, so help me understand. So the letter of agreement, when I read it, it said each town, Newton and Kingston, will have its own elementary school.
That's right.
And the state RSA, bu- bu- let me, help me out. So the state RSA says, elementary school, K through eight, or however, seven and nine. So, so to me, I'm not seeing the logic where we're not, where we're out of compliance.
Because.
I got it, I got it.
I think we got it here from the lawyer.
It's a state definition. It's a state definition that we have to go by.
This is the state definition.
Tom has the information.
I, I have it right here, and it's in that informational letter that I shared with parents repeatedly this last few weeks. I'm gonna email it to everyone through the, if you get the alert now, you know, when I call and say, "Snow day", then you'll get the email in a minute with the link to the same informational sheet that I'm sharing with you now.
Okay.
And that will have the hyperlinks to all the pertinent information, so it's really easy. I'm really sorry that some people haven't received it. I thought all of you were on my constant contact. But if you're not, shoot me an email, and I'll add you to the constant contact.
I could've, there's so much, I'm just, I keep hearing the state law, and I'm like, ah, the way I read it, where I just couldn't wrap my head around it.
That's why we're having this, this conversation, this is great. Like, all of this is great, everyone. So I don't, I want everyone to look.
Will you read that for people watching?
I'm going to, yeah. So, but I'll just read it, what it says is, um, the San, this is from Diane Goro, our district attorney.
Okay.
Okay? Um, and she has a long history of working with Sandborne. She said, "The Sandborne Regional School District is a cooperative", and that's the key that you're missing, we're a cooperative school district under RSA 195. A cooperative school district is defined as a district comprised of multiple towns served by one school board. You're reading the part of the law that's not for cooperative.
I'm reading the elementary definition, and you're nine, 195. I'm following you though, so please, okay.
So I just wanna clarify, it's different for a cooperative school district. The cooperative statute defines an elementary school as all grades from kindergarten or grade one through grade six, or kindergarten or grade one through grade eight. So, um, that's RSA 195, semicolon, one, comma, two.
Thank you, so that was the answer I needed.
Therefore, an elementary school must encompass all grades either up to grade six or eight. So it's weird, because it leaves out seven.
And there's no definition of middle school, like, there's no however, like, in the 189?
You have to go to the definition of a cooperative school district. It's different than a standalone district. You're reading the definition of a standalone district.
Standalone district.
Right, and that's, I just wanna help you, I mean, really, it's.
A master, so thank you.
And, and again, when, when, when the truth is on Facebook, just call me, 'cause I'm happy to help you, right? It's kinda like the X-Files, the truth is out there. And I, I'm not, I'm only joking to keep this light, but I really just want you all to feel comfortable reaching out to me, because I'm happy to help you. Um, and I will email this out to everybody that's on the school mailing list right now. Look, it's all set to go.
Hi, Kyle Susie from Kingston. I just have a quick question. Uh, out of compliance, how many years have we been out of compliance?
A long time.
Since nineteen seventy-nine, when we built the middle school.
Nineteen seventy-nine? So, okay.
Well, we don't really know, because we don't know when that statute came into effect.
Well, Ellie was, why do you say that, Ellie?
Because that's when the middle school was open.
Okay, so this is really good to know. Just so you're aware, from my perspective, it sounds like you're using a scare tactic when you say that we are out of compliance, but if we've been out of compliance that long, it, you know, shines a little light on it. What does the state care? You know, they do, will they?
Obviously, they don't.
Obviously, they don't. So why even say, or what is that even?
That's why I brought up Sandborneizing. I would've never thought, because contracts have been given to teachers that way for many years, and then all of a sudden, somebody said, "This is the first year of a three-year contract, the statute requires to do that." You could have one person in either community say they're not in compliance, and I feel like pulling their chain. So guess what I'm gonna do? And the, if, if this is correct, I'll let you come up with what the judge would do.
Yeah.
All right? So that's why I called it housekeeping.
Okay.
Now, I'm sorry I used that term, and you can disagree with my term, whatever you, but I think now you kinda get an idea where I'm coming from.
Okay, good.
You know, you can disagree with me, and that's okay. What do you got?
I'd like to raise one point about that.
Yep.
We don't actually know how long we've been out of compliance, 'cause we don't know when the state definition for a cooperative school district was made to the one that we have now.
But you can look it up.
What do we got?
I'm Kathy Rockwell from Newton. Um, I think just to piggyback on what's all been said, I think, um, I think the community as a whole would probably prefer if we did the, developed the strategic plan, came up with what, you know, the board and the administration feels is the optimal plan for our students, go through that detailed analysis, 'cause it does, it will take a lot of work to do the costs at Smith's. The, you know, what are the benefits, you know, between costs in our children's education? Like, it's going to take some time, but let's do that, and let's share that with us before, you know, I mean, I don't know, based on what we just talked about, it doesn't even seem like Article Eight is needed or a big deal, right? So in, in my mind, why are we, I mean, why would I approve it once we're gonna go try and restructure things anyways down the road? Or a plan's gonna be developed for that? So I guess I just wanna say, if you guys could work on developing the strategic plan and what that optimal situation in your mind for our children's education, what it would be, and then lay that out, and then go vote on it, so.
It does require a two-thirds vote, and it's, for, for that article to pass, two-thirds vote. It's gonna take a year or two for that to happen. In the meantime, we have these discussions, which are all good.
Yeah, no, but I always think that, you know, to eliminate the fear, or the, oh, what if it's this? Or what if it's that? I know some people want one thing or don't want this or that. It doesn't matter, right? But we all have opinions, and we ought to be able to provide our input. But you get, you know, as the educators and the administration, what is the best, you know, solution? You know, we, we might cut some costs here, but are we ruining their education else? You know, are we making it worse? I mean, I think we just really need to have that, that cost benefit analysis on what's gonna be best for the kids, and.
The good thing about this, everything everybody has said tonight is absolutely in our mix. You are absolutely correct.
Right, but we wanna be able to understand that before.
That's what we're hoping to do.
I think that's the, the issue, so.
We should probably, it's seven, so we should probably.
Yeah, well, just, I, I, I'm gonna read it, if nobody has anything, you know, because I think the next one's rather important, it's that seventy-five thousand. And there's a reason why we put that in there. Uh, vote to establish an unanticipated educational expense capital reserve fund, and it's for seventy-five thousand dollars we place in the fund, and the school board will be the agents to expend. That's like a lot of warrant articles, selectmen are the agents to, to expend. But I know this is one that you feel is very important, so I, I wanna make sure we cover that one.
Well, the idea of having a, our district doesn't currently have adequate reserve accounts for potential emergencies. So for example, if we have, uh, when I was a elementary school principal, I had twenty students move into first grade between July and August. I didn't get a teacher, and we really needed a teacher. And so this, these, these reserve funds allow us to address the needs of regular education students should they arise in an emergency manner. And that would only happen at a public meeting with school board approval. It's not like we can just go and spend the money. But the, the point is, is that there, there, I wanna continue to pare down any excess in our operating budget, but I don't dare to do that until there are adequate reserves. Right now, our district has about two-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars in special education. If you understand special education, that's one out-of-district placement, maybe two, maybe one and a half. It, it, one kid moves in.
What's an out-of-district placement?
An out-of-district placement is when a student has a disability that's so severe they can't participate in the regular education program, and they need to be placed in a special educational setting. And we have to pay for it. And, and it can happen this way. The student can move into the district with an IEP, and we have to pay for it. It doesn't even mean that we gave it to them. If they already have it, we have to follow it. So I just wanna be clear that, that we have, um, some capital money. We have a revolving account that comes from the funds that are generated by the rental of our facilities, and we have a special education account. We need to grow a regular education account so that we can then pare down the, the budget so that we don't have to feel like we're holding on to every dollar in case there's an emergency, and then give it back at the end of the year. I'd rather have it be more transparent. This is what we do. Over three years, we spent this much, that's what we need in the future. We know if we have a major problem, we have other accounts to, to handle this. We have a thirty-six million dollar budget. By conservative fiscal estimates, we should have reserve accounts of a million to a million point two. We have about four-hundred thousand dollars, maybe five. So we really, this is a serious problem, and I can't tell you that, I, 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 there's no way for me to explain. It's a little bit scary to be flying the Starship Enterprise when only one engine's running. Do you know what I'm saying? There's money in the budget, but, uh, I'm just, you like Captain Kirk.
Well, by, by the same token, one of the things we don't do enough of is hold our state reps accountable for the money conquered. They're still giving us thirty-three hundred dollars a kid in state aid, the same amount that they gave us twenty years ago.
By the way, whenever Ellie makes that face, I stop. It took me about one meeting to figure that out.
We almost need a side committee strictly to deal with that, because they're giving five percent raises to the liquor commissioners, and they still haven't given us a nickel back more to our schools. It's a, it's a crying shame. Millions, hundred-and-forty million dollars in excess funds through the business profit tax in St. New Hampshire, and we haven't seen a dime of it in the local schools.
Well, and I think.
There's my soapbox.
So, so on that note, Noah, um, I do like to use the walkie-talkies in the office, and sometimes I'll say Captain Kirk to Mr. Stack, and they don't really like that very much. Um, but I do, I do wanted to say that, that the goal here is to equalize the blood sugar of the money flow. 'Cause what happens is, when you don't have adequate reserve accounts, the tax rates go up and down, and what I wanna do is to stabilize things so that we, this year, we gave back one-point-five million dollars to the community, because we went into a budget freeze last year, because we were afraid that we were gonna have three out-of-district placements in special ed. So you're gonna have lower taxes this year, but then it looks like your taxes go up a bunch next year, because we gave back so much this year, because I put the budget in a freeze, because we didn't have enough money in reserve accounts to be safe, and then kids went without things that they needed.
Isn't the note to the high school supposed to be paid off in a couple of years? Is it ever known back to?
Seven years. And at that point, Fremont's tuition will go away, which is almost four million dollars, if they don't stay. So we don't wanna count that chicken until it's hatched. That's a really good point, and I just wanna be clear that when that bond ends, their money goes too if they don't choose to stay with us, which I'm, I, I certainly would love for them to stay. Um, I, I just think that it's really important for everyone to understand the purpose of this article, so thank you for hearing me out on that.
There's a twenty-five thousand dollar to the capital improvement makers. If you're from Kingston, you're probably aware, oh, I'm sorry, did anybody wanna talk to that seventy-five? I'm sorry. The twenty-five thousand, nope, we do. Cheryl, what do you got?
I know the answer to this question, but I think it would be, um, important that other people realize why this fund was not established, or the money was not being put into the special ed account, if you are saying that, um, the expenses might likely come from a special ed student moving in.
That's great, Cheryl, thank you so much. Uh, what, what, that's like when you get the soft pitch, you know? Um, thanks, Cheryl, I, that's perfect. Uh, you can move money from regular ed to special ed, but it's virtually impossible to move it from special ed to regular ed. So we wanna establish regular ed accounts. If we have an emergency in special ed, we can send money that way. But when it's appropriated for special ed, you can't go the other way. Thank you, Cheryl.
Okay, um, there's twenty-five thousand of capital improvement. If anybody, those people from Kingston, and maybe Newton, I don't know if Newton's. These are, this is money put aside for futures. Like in Kingston, we do for fire truck, put so much aside, so then when we buy a fire truck, we don't have that's a big spike. Same thing with plumbing equipment. This is pretty much the same thing. It's gonna be a capital improvement, a capital reserve account, so that when we end up having to buy a truck, our huge snow machine, or.
A roof on the gym at Swayze.
Yeah, um, there'll be money so we don't hit you for, you know, a big tax increase, like the fire department, you know, you're gonna see in Kingston, put money away for a fire truck, so when you buy a half-a-million-dollar fire truck, you've got money for it already. Um, any questions on that? Okay, next one is the hockey, any, any questions on that? Okay, I know people know about it quite a bit, so if there's anyone wants to speak about it, that's fine, but they're, they're gonna pay, I think it's ten-five, ten-five sixty-eight, I guess it is.
I, I will just say that there were two questions in the little ballot box at the meeting, and I don't wanna belabor this, but I'll just read them, because that's what we said we would do. Um, "Why can't the board elect to fund a hockey program in lieu of a private citizens having to propose an amendment?" I'll answer that one, because I asked that question when I got here, and what the answer was is that the, the, um, the hockey ballot happened prior to my arrival, and because the citizens voted down, voted it down, the board didn't feel comfortable going against the will of the citizens, so that's why it stayed in the zone that it's in. Um, and then, "Who has the authority to decide what sports programs are and aren't funded and on what basis?" Well, I think the answer is ultimately the school board and the community, because there's the school board's proposed budget that goes to the Budcom for review, and then the Budcom makes a decision and sends it back, and then it goes to the, the, the public deliberative session, where the public can add or take money away from the budget. Uh, it, it's a, it's a, a complicated process, and the reality is, is that, um, if we can do this, can I have a ski team? I mean, there's all kinds of stuff that I want to, that I can't have, and we can't have, because we just are, we're trying really hard to manage our funds carefully. There, um, I think that it's important to note that there are a lot of people who have a lot of passion around things for students. Uh, I would like a comprehensive jazz program, a ski team, I'd like a hockey team. I could spend fifty grand right now if you'd like me to get going, and I'm not asking for that, because until we straighten out the entire situation with our enrollments and the layout of the district, it's really not fair to ask the taxpayers for anything more than what we absolutely need, which is exactly what the budget was presented as.
Further questions, just in case? Okay, so this is gonna conclude, we're only nine minutes over, that's not too bad. Um, why don't we take a couple minutes while the people who wanna stay can stay, and the people who wanna leave can leave, and we can go and do our personal business if we have any to do.
Oh, um, thank you, everyone, for coming tonight, and if any of you have any questions or wanna call or email me, please do so, I'd love to chat with you.
Okay. Phyllis, you all set?
All set.
Scott, you all set?
Adam?
Okay, here we go. Minutes.
They'll move.
Second.
I'm motioning a minute, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous, Phyllis. Okay, um, manifest documents, uh, we have here a grant, and Michelle's gonna talk about it that we need to sign, so it's on the last page, it says, "Sign here", and Michelle, what do we got?
That's really just the paperwork for the, um, Public School Infrastructure Grant that we received that will help fund the blue light system that's being considered.
That's what, ten thousand? I didn't read it, but.
No, it's more than that, it's, it's a twenty percent, we have to match twenty percent, they will pay eighty percent, and I don't recall the numbers off the top of my head, but I think it was sixty thousand.
That's what Mike Tramell finished with?
Yes, sixty in total, but they pay eighty percent.
All right. Resignation to.
Yes, we do have resignations of Melissa-
Resignations?
Melissa Gallagher, Special Education at Memorial and John Welsh, Social Studies Teacher at the high school.
Motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
That was, I think Ellie and, and Larry.
No Tammy and Larry.
Oh, sorry Tammy, alright, sorry. Well, her, her, a lot of, I make, I look at her-
Phyllis got it.
I look at her and make sure that she's looking because she's got a right ear. I'm sorry?
It's a little noisy in the audience if you want to.
Oh.
Hard to hear.
How many of you are my students upstairs? Be quiet, you know how I am. I don't want to give you detention. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, nominations, we don't have any?
Yep.
Oh, okay, that was unanimous, Phillips, I'm sorry. Okay, superintendent's reports.
Okay, uh, just we, sending around the document for the Public School Infrastructure Fund slash Communications. I just wanted to mention that, um, I am very grateful that Mr. Tramell helped write this grant, but I also wanted to mention that, uh, Chief Don Briggs had a huge hand in this because he caught wind of the grant. And called me immediately, which then got Michael to write the grant immediately, which really helped us to get the money. It does fund eighty percent of what's called a blue light system. A blue light system is not related to Special K, I mean to, uh, um, what, Kmart, blue lights, uh, not the cereal, I'm sorry. The, the, um, it's really great because for areas like the, the gym, the music room and other places where people can't hear, if there's an emergency, the blue light system signals them without, uh, it, it's, it's a light. Might not be blue, but they just call it blue light. So we're really excited because we really feel like this is a need and this grant will fund eighty percent of the cost for those blue lights at Memorial, at, uh, the high school and the baking school. The Memorial School and the middle school already received a grant for walkie-talkies, so they were not eligible at this time. So we're really excited and I just wanted to thank, uh, Chief Briggs and Mr. Tramell, or the ghost of Mr. Tramell, uh, for that hard work and the money. It's really great. The, our safety advisory committee has not met because of the snow day. We'll be meeting at the first of April, but I just wanted to let everyone know that we're making progress. We've ordered materials to teach children about the Alice model that we're using for, um, for evacuations. Uh, we also sent a number of staff members to be trainers, so they've learned more about the model and will be training staff. And we're anticipating doing, um, staff and then student drills as soon as the weather's better. I don't really want kids outside running around in the snow without jackets on. So we're going to wait until it warms up a little bit before we start doing any kind of live drills. Uh, that, that I do want to say has gone exceptionally well. I cannot be more thankful for the number of people that have attended from the Rockingham Sheriff's Department, uh, administrators, community members. It's just been a fantastic group. Uh, one of the gentlemen on the committee is a parent of a baking student who's also former Secret Service. Recently retired Secret Service, so it's just the level of input is amazing. Um, and again, both of our chiefs of police have been absolutely fantastic, as have the fire departments from all three communities. Um, so a big shout out to, uh, Mr. Jewett and, uh, um, Mr. Briggs. The middle school update, we're getting there. I, the team is waiting for cost estimates for modifications to the high school facility to accommodate seventh and eighth grade. I kind of already shared that in the previous meeting. But, uh, once those cost estimates come in, we're, 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 we're hopeful to be presenting, um, the plan uh, to move seventh and eighth grade to the high school facility and maintain sixth grade at the elementary schools per the board's request in September. Uh, we're hoping to have that for you in the next month or so. I'm not putting it in stone because every time I think I've got it done, someone comes up with a brilliant idea that saves a bunch of money and I gotta go back to the table and, and follow that idea. It went from significant costs downward through really hard work and, and, and really thinking about things very carefully. So I look forward to at least sharing that plan with you for your consideration. Uh, we also have had, uh, the great fortune. I'm, I'm very happy to say that our relationship with Columbia University is blossoming. We have, uh, we sent a number of teachers to learn about Columbia University's writing workshop last year. And, uh, those folks came back quite excited. We also have been talking about increasing the volume of reading and the rigor for reading in our district. We're focused on writing right now and we are actually having three staff developers come to Sandborne this summer to work with our teachers in grade levels K-two, three six, three-five and six-eight. So we're actually going to have Columbia's staff in our district with our teachers attending their workshops. And on top of that, w- we're really lucky because probably the, the greatest literacy expert in the world. Her name is Kathy Collins. She wrote the book Growing Readers. I've been working with Kathy for almost ten years and she lives in two towns away. So she came to a literacy forum with our administrators and teachers two weeks ago, three weeks ago. Um, and we had a conversation and I'm very excited to say that we will probably be contracting to have Kathy work with our K-two staff. And that, that is, I can't tell you, like I get goosebumps just talking about it. Not only is she totally hilarious, but she's amazing. She's creative, she's about kids, she's about engagement and excitement. It's not, it's not, um, there really is no way to, you can look her up online, Kathy Collins. She's incredible. So we're really excited and our hope is that Mary Aronworth, the Deputy Director of Columbia University, will come for a day in July. Um, she's phenomenal. I've studied with her for a number of years, but she's really hard to get on site. She happens to have some family in New Hampshire, so I'm trying to work the angle of doing a family visit over the fourth and then be with us on the fifth. So we'll see if it happens, I'll keep you posted. Uh, so other than that, um, I do also want to acknowledge that, uh, Mr. Stack is working hard to try to figure out if he can rig, reconfigure some staff positions to create some math intervention at the high school. Uh, I am going to ask a number of teachers and administrators to, to, uh, meet for a two-day summit this summer regarding our math instruction, our math scores and the issues with math. I don't want folks to think that math isn't on the agenda, I just have a plan. And my plan is to bring the instructional strategies from Columbia University to our district. And then engage our incredible staff and try to employ those instructional strategies in the area of math. So there's a process here. We, we're going to, we're going to, there's this great book by a guy named Austin Kleon, it's called Steel Like An Artist. It's funny, but it's not really funny because it works. You, great artists find things they love and they imply them themselves in their craft, their own way. I'd like to see our teachers take what Columbia University has done in, in reading and writing and apply it to math. So that's kind of the plan, but for now, we're, we're taking it one step at a time and we're working on writing because we have to learn the work first and then apply it. So more to come on that in the future. Uh, thanks, thanks. I just love seeing so many people here, so thank you for staying for this next part of the meeting.
Committee reports.
So the policy committee met tonight and reviewed the policies on the agenda. And we also discussed sections D and E, which we'll be reviewing next at our next meeting. Um, section D is fiscal management, so we're hoping that the finance subcommittee members will pay careful attention to those finance-related policies when we review them. We'd appreciate your, your attention on those, um, once they're forwarded and we also have a meeting planned for April third, um, at four forty-five, our next meeting. We also discussed, um, the conflict of interest ethics policies and we only have two policies related to conflict of interest and conduct. And in fact, the school board association recommends about fifteen different policies.
Of course.
Um, and our current policy only covers board members. And it has other employees and other people mentioned in our policy, but it doesn't belong in that particular policy. It's a board policy only. So we need to, uh, actually pull that out and put it into the proper section of our manual. And we'll be doing a lot of work on the conflict of interest, um, ethics policies in an upcoming meeting. But we're still waiting for some results from these, the attorney on some of the policies. Um, so I will wait until later to discuss what we discussed on the other three policies for later on. That's all I have. Anyone who would like to run for po- policy committee chair is welcome to talk to you after the election, thank you.
When something works, you don't fix it.
Said it, not me.
That's the kiss of death.
Student achievement.
The Excellence in Student Achievement Committee, uh, last met on January twenty-third. We had a meeting scheduled for, uh, February thirteenth, which was canceled, um, along with our regular school board meeting because of snow, I think. Uh, so it seems like it's been quite a while, lifetime, but in attendance at that meeting, myself, uh, Dr. Brown, Mr. Heath, uh, Superintendent Ambrose, interim director of Academics, Professional Learning and Student Affairs, Patty Haynes, she really needs a shorter-
Yeah, we need an acronym, don't we?
High School Assistant Principal, Mr. Dawson, uh, Guidance Director, Ms. Levitt. One of, uh, our committee's goals this year was to summarize academic data trends in the district annual report, which is published for distribution at the deliberative session. Pursuant to that goal, Dr. Haynes presented a targeted outcomes report for inclusion in the annual report. The report presents the results of performance tests at each grade level for the two thousand seventeen, eighteen school year. Specifically, the percentage of students at or above proficiency. Multiple assessments are taken at each grade level and the results are relatively consistent, which offers some validation of the instructional practices in place. Generally, about sixty-five to seventy-five percent of students in grades three through twelve are proficient in ELA and math, although there is some inconsistency in math scores at or above grade eight. Only thirty percent of students scored proficient on the statewide assessment in grades eight, ten and eleven. Mr. Ambrose feels strongly that this is attributable to the lack of a middle tier of intervention for struggling students. And that resources are being directed into facilities maintenance, which could more productively be used for educating students, which we spoke about tonight as well. The, the report also presents average daily attendance rates, which are generally at or above ninety-five percent. This suggests that education is being delivered consistently and should rule out attendance as a contributing factor for any lags in performance testing. The other area presented in the report is post-secondary enrollment and second-year retention rates. The report's format and content were discussed. Dr. Brown recommended the addition of some contextual information delineating the district's current status and next steps. As well as a provision of some historical information which could help to identify areas of growth. Annie Collier of Newton offered public comment that the report could set and manage the community's expectations through the use of this contextual data. Ms. Levitt reported on the progress of the early college program research and development and presented a draft MOU with, um, Northern Essex Community College for the committee's review. This will be discussed at the next EISA meeting. That meeting is currently on the schedule for March twentieth, although that is sort of in the interim period between the election and the organizational meeting, so I'm uncertain. As to, we haven't actually discussed whether, we're going to talk about that at our February thirteenth meeting, but so it's on the schedule for three twenty and stay tuned for an update on that if the date needs to change.
Facilities.
Facilities, uh, committee met on March sixth. And we didn't give the report. It would have given, been given at the February thirteenth meeting, but it snowed, so we're giving it tonight.
So you met February sixth?
February sixth at three forty-five.
No, I believe you said March.
We did meet tonight, actually.
Well, we met tonight also. I'll, I'll talk about that a little bit. Yeah, so this report is for February sixth. Um, the members present were Dr. Pam Brown and myself. Uh, Mr. Mason was absent. Also present were Michelle Croto, Steve Riley and Kristen McNulty. We reviewed and approved the minutes of the January ninth meeting. And we received a short report on the recommended blue light systems. And Michelle mentioned these are emergency systems that employ a visual warning and are to be deployed to supplement the current audio alarms, especially in areas where alarms not, are not always audible. The district has been awarded a grant from the state of New Hampshire for part of this work at the high school and baking school. This means the state grant will cover eighty percent of the cost of the work, up to forty-eight thousand dollars. The school board has approved this work and Steve Riley has procured two cost proposals. And of tonight, uh, there, we were told there's a third cost proposal. The cost of prior to tonight, the cost of the recommended proposal is twenty-three thousand, three hundred and thirty, forty-eight thousand. And at twenty percent, the cost to the district is only four thousand, six hundred, sixty-nine dollars and sixty cents. The facilities revolving fund was reviewed. The balance as of November thirtieth was a hundred and seventy-seven thousand, nine hundred and five dollars and thirty-three cents. The balance will be updated with the January numbers as soon as they are finalized. This fund is supported by money collected from renting the district's facilities to outside groups. Part of the fees charged include recovery for wear and tear of the facilities and the equipment used. In turn, money from this fund can be used to maintain and update the facilities and equipment. Ms. Croto presented a request for an additional six hundred and seventy-five dollars in funding for state mandated water quality testing. At our January nineteenth meeting, we got approved up to three thousand for this testing. Since then, the list of locations to be tested has been finalized, adding another six hundred and seventy-five dollars to the cost and we approved this request. The, uh, facilities committee met again this afternoon at, um, on March sixth at three forty-five. I'm going to, uh, present that report at the next meeting, but I do want to talk about one proposal that we heard tonight. Or this afternoon, we reviewed a proposal by the Kingston Youth Baseball Softball Group to construct a dugout at the Chase Field softball field. The estimated cost is thirty-five hundred dollars. The total of that amount would be raised by the Kingston Youth, uh, Baseball Softball Group. And the school board, uh, this would, would, this would be con- considered a donation or a gift to the district. And there's two policies that govern gifts to the district. So we reviewed those policies. And per the policies, we had a vote. Uh, we'd like to recommend to the school board that we put this on the next meeting agenda for review. The KYBS has agreed to confirm that the law re- Lovering construction will oversee the project. And assured it is properly constructed. They will be asked to provide certificates of insurance and the KYBS will secure any needed permits. Steve Riley will also monitor the project to be certain the district's interests are looked after. That's my report for that. Well, the next meeting is, uh, tentatively scheduled for April third at three forty-five PM. I guess it'll depend on what happens at the election and who's on what committees.
The recommendation to look at policies KCD and KCD dash R. Those are the gift policies.
Nope, that was finance. No, finance, that you also-
Finance. The finance committee report, uh, we met on February twentieth. The committee members present were Tammy Mahoney, Elektra, Alessio, Jim Baker, plus the business administrator, Michelle Croto, along with assistant Christine McNulty. The minutes for our January sixteenth meeting were reviewed and approved. The business administrator updated the committee on various fund balances. As of January thirty-first, the facilities use revolving fund has a balance of two hundred and thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven dollars and fourteen cents. This is a preliminary number and could be adjusted. Updating trusts and other funds is in process. We reviewed the budget expense reports from January first through January thirty-first. The health and dental expenses for the period are three hundred and seventy-two thousand, one hundred and seventy-eight dollars and two cents. The general fund expense excluding health and dental are one million, nine hundred and eighty thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five dollars and sixty-four cents. We discussed the status of the seminary property. The superintendent is in discussion with two parties with a preliminary interest in considering uses for part of the old campus. And these discussions are very early and are in a question and answer phase. We also reviewed the tuition accree- agreement between Fremont and the district. The, uh, current agreement specifies a estimated amount which was required to be provided before December fifteenth for Fremont's budgeting purposes. And that amount is nineteen thousand, eight hundred and six dollars and ninety-nine cents per student. In addition, Fremont continues to pay its own transportation costs. Um, the final figure will be provided on April fifteenth. After our budget is, 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 uh, voted on by the board. We reviewed a quote for renewing outsourced copier services for the district with the same vendor for savings each year. The second year savings we're offered were substantially lower than the first. Since then, the vendor has agreed to match the second year for a total savings of thirty thousand and thirty-six dollars. And we have reviewed and approved transfer balances for various general fund accounts to other related accounts. The majority of these funds were adjustments between health insurance, retirement and salaries. The total of the fund transferred reviewed was seventy-six thousand, two hundred and fifty-one dollars and twenty-six cents. We also reviewed budget accounting for anticipated federal projects in the amount of two hundred and forty-five thousand, four hundred and seventy-four dollars and eleven cents. And the next finance committee meeting is scheduled for March thirteen at four thirty PM. Again, uh, subject to the election. Lot of numbers, thank you.
Finance, yeah. Public Relations.
Public Relations Committee met on February eleventh. In attendance, myself, Mrs. Alessio, Dr. Haynes, absent, Mr. Mason, Mr. Broderick. There was a brief discussion regarding, at the time, recent letters to the editor from a Fremont resident, which contained some inaccuracies about tuition amounts. However, no action was resolved upon. The upcoming public forum was discussed. There were four questions submitted at the deliberative, which we circulated to the board members. It is hoped that members of the public will attend and bring questions to the forum, which, thank you very much for having done that. A schedule for submitting letters of support for the warrant articles was also discussed. Mrs. Alessio presented a press release on the staffing contracts, which- Mrs. Alessio presented a press release on the staffing contracts, which would request the public's support on behalf of the board. The PR committee will ask the board to grant the authority for this at the February 13th meeting, that was the intent at least. And it will be targeted for next week's edition of the Carriage Town News, other newspapers, and on the district website. Mrs. Mahoney will submit a letter soliciting support for the budget the following week and the next. And last, prior to the election letter, will contain a general appeal for the community to vote and support the articles. So I just, I want to mention that we did, because we were not able to have that discussion at the February 13th meeting about whether to release that press release, speaking on behalf of the board, we had, we, there was a sort of a thumbs up vote, not really a vote, but by email, which was legally done, according to our legal counsel. And I just do want to mention that we did, we, there was some difference of opinion among the board members as to whether the PR committee has the authority to issue that, those sorts of press releases and articles on behalf of the board, whether the PR committee has that authority. I felt that we did not, and that was my recommendation, that we needed to have that discussion among the board. And my understanding is that our legal counsel was in agreement with that, that we, the board members would have all needed to agree in order for that press release to be put out. The PR committee does not have the authority to speak on behalf of the board, so I just wanted to mention that.
You know, Tammy and I did not agree on that because the board, in my opinion, had endorsed the two contract articles. So I took that as an agreement to go forward with it for press release. I think next year, I may ask for that when we approve warrant articles as a board, does that authorize the PR committee automatically put forward a release? And then you have a chance to vote on it, which meets Mrs. Mahoney's criteria and that, and I understand that, I do. But if we agree on this item, we should be able to publicize it as a board.
It's already publicized.
Exactly.
I wasn't just targeting you, actually. That was, we've had prior discussions, all of us at the committee, I believe Mr. Mason was in on one of those meetings.
Right, right, no, no.
So we definitely had a difference of opinion, not just.
We did, we absolutely did. And I thought, why do we have to wait? And it turns out, we ended up waiting a lot because of the snow and all that stuff, so.
Yeah.
Anyways.
Their personnel subcommittee has not met a long time.
We needed to, luckily.
Yes. The Seco School of Technology is next on the docket. The Seco, last Seco School of Technology governing board meeting was held on January 28th, 2019, and the attendance was me and Mr. Ambrose and many other governing board members from the presenting the school boards. The next Seco School of Technology's governing board meeting will be held on Monday, March 4th at, no, pardon me, Monday, March 12th at 4:30 PM. This is a very important meeting because ultimately we'll be discussing on the agenda three outlined items. The approval of the last board meeting minutes, the 20-year agreement review, as well enrollment reporting. We'll get current status of the enrollments of the sending schools, how many students we're sending. We average about a hundred students that we send, and so we'll be looking at the enrollment report. And we might also learn as well, if you're questioning who the new principal is of the Seco School of Technology, that hasn't been publicly announced yet. So we hope that we might learn that, and then we'll share that with you as well. concludes my update. Monday, the, Monday, the 11th, sorry.
Yep.
It's a, time zones, kill.
Seminary.
No, no, nothing to discuss at this time, except that I do have a, a meeting on Wednesday as Mr. Baker alluded to, I'm sorry, Friday. This meeting is interesting because this is a company that specializes in doing very high-end Halloween events. And they raise a significant amount of money in a very short period of time, and they would like to look at the seminary building. So, I have no idea what's going to happen, but the creativity abounds, it just shows up at my doorstep.
That's scary in and of itself.
For those of you in the audience who don't know, I'm especially excited because Halloween's my birthday. So if we have a Halloween event, that'd be pretty fun.
What's that ride in Disney with the, it's the elevator shaft and you go down?
Oh yeah, the Tower of Terror.
Yeah, the Tower of Terror, yeah, no, no, I'm good. But anyway, I'll keep you all posted, I'm talking with folks, and there is another group that's interested as well, and I've been going back and forth with them, but, you know, it's preliminary.
That scares me a bit. I taught over there, does that mean if I die, my ghost is going to be in there on Halloween?
Hey, don't ask me, that's.
Frank Ryan occupies the top floor.
Frank Ryan, yes. His ghost is there.
His ghost is there.
Yes, ma'am.
It's the Drama Club to perform at that auditorium.
Ah, there we go, that'd be a really good idea. See, see where, we'll see what happens.
Could make a lot of money.
Sorry for returning, but I just realized I did not actually announce the next meeting of the Public Relations Committee, March 27th.
Thank you.
Sorry.
And what time?
Oh, I'm sorry, 4:30.
They're all here, by the way, ladies and gentlemen. Budget, what a surprise, nothing.
No report.
Yes. Don't worry, next year we'll be here. Adam, how you doing?
Doing all right.
How was Winter Carnival?
Winter Carnival was really fun, that was really.
Did the seniors win?
Of course we did.
It happened that they didn't.
So, the freshmen, I wrote this a while, a while ago, so the freshmen were working on their Winter Carnival and ordering their t-shirts. The sophomores working on Winter Carnival and they finished and are selling their community calendars. Juniors, same, and they are doing their Yankee Candle fundraiser for prom. And the seniors are finishing our class shirts, the profits are going to go towards our class. So, Winter Carnival, the packet with the new games and the new rules got handed out. The themes for Spirit Week were Monday was meme day, Tuesday was tacky-tatay day, Wednesday was rock versus rock, which is rock and roll versus, like, caveman rock. So, that was, that was a fun one. Thursday was surf versus turf, and then Friday was color day. There was a, there's definitely a lot of participation in spirit, which was good to see, a lot of students got involved, that was good. A huge thank you goes out to all the teachers who helped out, Ms. Mulver, Student Council, President Audrey LeBlanc, and Vice President Marissa Mullin, and the rest of Student Council. They did, they put in a lot of work to it, and the seniors ended, did end up winning, so that was a good way to go out. This year, instead of a penny war, we did a canned food drive. We did get a lot of cans, which was cool, and we added a little twist onto it. The class with the most cans got to pie an administrator in the face, but, yeah, but the three classes that lost had to get pied in the face, like their president. So, the seniors won that too, so.
Once they did.
So, our president, Ashley Felisberto, got to pie Mr. K in the face. That was a, I think Mr. G got a couple nice photos of that, so that, that should be coming out.
Who got pied in the face?
Uh, Mr. K.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that was funny. Actually, yesterday, we had our Timberland meeting. It was the winter Southern New Hampshire Student Council meeting from 1:15 PM to 6:00 PM last night. The conference was how to be an informed leader, learned from Marine Captain Patrick Dean, listened to the head of Glisten, New Hampshire, and got involved with the Zero Left Initiative, which is a program that encourages getting rid of leftover persky from pills. So, that was, that was really cool. And that's all I have.
New Hampshire School Board Associate, Delegate results. Corey, you gave up a Saturday and went up to Concord to represent the school district, and Pam, well, you went up as an interesting observer. So, what do you got for results?
Ultimately, first and foremost, the minutes for the New Hampshire School Board Association Delegate Assembly are online as well, so I'm going to be very brief here for what's worth it. They're online at the New Hampshire School Board Association's website. On January 26th, the New Hampshire School Board Association held their annual assembly. The annual assembly was actually called to order at 1:15 and ended at 3:07. Of the hundred and sixty-two school board, excuse me, of the hundred and sixty-two member school boards statewide, fifty-seven were in attendance. Others have to catch up. Fifty-seven, sorry, Tom, you're giving that.
It's all right.
There was, on the agenda, in the afternoon, there was a presence report, nominations report for the other officials and the new board, the new board president, treasurer's report, executive director's report, and then what we really were concerned about is the continued and proposed resolutions. I'm just going to give a highlight of those continued and proposed resolutions report here. Again, we have the minutes and also the voting results in our packets as board members. Of the continued resolutions, there were nine that were presented and voted upon at the delegate assembly. The nine for which were voted, we actually, our votes matched theirs.
Oh, good.
So everything that we said, they, as the whole, the body of fifty-seven, we all voted the same. They're all continuing. Of the proposed resolutions, for which there were eleven, there was actually, I'm going to group in these into four different areas here. Three of the proposed did not require action on the floor, thus there was actually no vote and they were withdrawn. Proposed number, excuse me, three were no action. Proposed resolution number twelve was withdrawn by Mirmack School District on the floor. Proposed resolutions ten, eleven, fifteen, and twenty were voted upon and our vote matched that of the delegate assembly. So, what you're hearing so far is four of the proposed, of eleven, we matched. There was three for which we did not match, and that is sixteen, eighteen, and nineteen. Again, if you look at the results and stuff in our packets, you'll see this. Needless to say, there was two resolutions that took basically the whole time, and those were the same conversations that happened here as well. And that was proposed resolution number ten, which was about guns, and proposed number nineteen as well, excuse me, I apologize, firearms in buildings, let me be more verbally precise. And then proposed number ten, which states that New Hampshire School Board Association, local school districts and superintendents work closely, intensely with the local and state safety and law enforcement personnel to develop individualized school safety plans to retain control over what weapons are best kept in place. As far as number nineteen, so both of those were, again, firearm related, those ones took up the entire conversation. And I just want to remind you to hear the votes on these, because we voted for number ten and it matched, we voted for number nineteen and it did not match because of language, but there was thirty-one votes opposed and twenty-three in favor, so it was extremely tight. So that number's actually changed a bit over the last couple of years, if you look at the proposed resolutions. So what I'm trying to point out here is, like, a couple of years ago, there's a bigger gap in the opposed versus the in favor for firearms and public safety stuff, which is following state trying with the House bills as well. You asked me to be quick and brief, I'm trying to be quick and brief. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, you were there, yeah, sure. You got anything to say?
Yeah, I attended the morning sessions of this meeting, and I heard from the Shaker Regional School District, that's SAU-80, they presented their best practices, and they were named School Board of the Year in 2018 by the School Board Association. They also presented their five-year strategic plan, so I urge all of the board members to please take a look at that, it's a very impressive document, as we update our own strategic plan.
What school was that, again?
Shaker Regional School District, SAU-80.
I, I would echo that Dr. Brown sent that document to me and it is excellent.
It is wonderful.
Yeah, it would be a good template for us to use as we begin to revamp our strategic plan, because we do technically have a strategic plan, but we need a lot of, we need to do a lot of work on it.
Yep.
Okay. Now to the fun time, public comments. Please stay to the agenda if you would, please. Come on down, you're the next contestant on the prize track. Do I watch TV?
I don't know, do you?
I don't know if I know what it says.
I remember Bob Barker.
You're old.
I like Bob Barker.
You're up.
Excuse me, Nancy Ross, Kingston resident, former school board member and proud parent of three Sanborn alumni, all of whom received an outstanding education during their tenure, went on to great colleges, and all have professional careers in their chosen fields. Ellie, it's great to see you haven't lost your touch after all these years, but your vast knowledge and years of experience are a welcome asset to the board in this district. Thank you for your return. I supported all stakeholders when I was a board member, and I continue to support all those staff members, teachers, paraprofessionals, who I may add all hold a degree and are in no way glorified babysitters, the leadership team, elected school officials and candidates who not only emulate, but exemplifies pride. Why do I support these people? Because they are all well aware of the need to budget wisely, they never lose sight of what is in the best interest of our children, unlike others who only believe in what is in the best interest of their pockets or pocketbooks. Voters, especially parents of the Sanborn Regional School District, go out and exercise your right to vote in the local election being held next week. If you want to see progress and watch our district move in a forward direction, then I urge you to vote for the candidates that support education and represent all stakeholders, including students. After all, they are our future. Thank you.
I didn't, I was remiss in saying something, try to keep to three minutes. Okay, sorry, but that's the.
I got my, my tablet here.
No, no, you were, you were, and that's fine, it's just, I didn't say it.
Mine out.
I was going to wait for dawn and then I thought, you know, right, you know.
No, he doesn't know me. I'm Kathy Rockwell, resident in Newton. I have a first and fourth grader at Memorial and a sixth grader at the middle school. I'm an environmental engineer professionally, but I dedicated my investment time out, outside of my profession, as Memorial PTO, membership chair, girl scout leader to the fourth and sixth graders in Newton, as well as a coach coordinator in the Sanborn Youth Basketball Program. In all the volunteer programs I've been involved with, we focus not only in the program and athletics that were, you know, that are at hand, but also build upon the Sanborn Pride and Cares programs that every Sanborn staff member across the district helps instill in our children. I guess first, you know, does everybody here know what CARES stand for, right? You know, this is something that goes through everywhere, and my first grader, you know, is happy to come home and tell me about it, you know? So we've got cooperation, assertion, responsibility, empathy, and self-regulation, self-control. Each of our community's children are taught this and strive to attain these goals. I want to note that, and this is really the meat of what I wanted to say here and to kind of the audience as well as to the board, the responsibility and self-regulation, you know, self-control right now, you hold dear to my heart in this particular time of the year. Every year during this local election season, I question if this is the right school district for our family. For, you know, for my children's education, the amount of negativity that we see on local social media and letters to the editor and during the campaigning, whether it's at the, you know, the transfer station, it really makes me question if this is the right atmosphere, right atmosphere for our children's development. The negativity and decisiveness just has to end, it doesn't help build our community, it breaks it down. And so I just want to ask that each of our elected officials and the candidates running, and even, and especially those that are supporting you, really look at what you're preaching and focus on emulating what Sanborn Pride and Cares represents. Before you hit send on that post online, or you come up here and talk, you know, ask yourself, does this add value to the discussion and does it represent cares? We owe that to each other and to our children in this community, who all of, you know, you are representing. Our children, our teachers and administrators are doing a wonderful job working with our children on this, and we need to be better as a community. When we go to the polls next week to vote, we want to make sure that the candidates are voting, represent all of us, not just one group, diversity in the board is needed. The board needs to be looking out for the community's children and act in a manner in line with Sanborn Pride and Cares and the positive growth of our communities. Let's focus on the children and developing and maintaining a strong educational system. We need positive individuals representing our children's future. I just want to say, you know, I don't want to go mentioning, I was going to try and go into further and I will cut it down because you did say three minutes, but I do want to say, you know, I have full support for Corey Mason, as well as Jim McCarthy and Heather Indem, and each of them, I want to say all, for all, everybody, including, you know, everybody that's on the board, thank you for putting, you know, yourself out there, the time, the effort, you know, the community does appreciate that, but I just really want, let's focus on the positive. And lastly, I just want to voice my support for the teachers and staff and let them know that, you know, we here as the community, as parents, greatly appreciate all they can do, and let's show them by. And let's show them by approving articles four and six next week. Thank you.
I'm gonna make it five minutes cuz you said three.
One of my former students.
I can give him a little time.
I will watch you.
I know you will. I'm gonna read fast. Hello, my name is Dawn Dutton. I am a Kingston resident, a former Newton resident, a graduate of this school district and a parent to a second grader, fifth grader, and tenth grader here in our district. I would like to shed some perspective on articles three, four, and six. Yes, they ask taxpayers for money, that is what tears our district apart every year. Unfortunately, too many people look at the dollar signs and don't see what they truly represent. I am a taxpayer and a parent, I am in the trenches, if you will. I see what our district is doing well and I see where our district struggles. I have conversations with our teachers, support staff, administrators, and have attended almost every school board meeting for over a year now. It is easy to look at data on a spreadsheet and make assumptions as to what exactly that means, but numbers and data don't always tell the full story. The reality of it is, our teachers and administrators are doing the best they can with what they are given. We do not support enough, support them enough to allow them to do their jobs the way that they want to do them. Every teacher I have encountered has our students' best interests at heart. They go above and beyond to help our students and far too many of them at their own out-of-pocket expense. By supporting the teachers and support staff contracts, you are not only saying thank you for all you do, but you are also saying consistency is important to our district. With these contracts, we will retain teachers that we have invested in over the years. To bring in a new hire at quite possibly a higher step or pay level and then have to train them is more expensive in the long run. Is that what we're trying to do? Invest thousands of dollars into teachers and support staff to then have them go to a school district that will compensate them for their experience and training? Let's not continue to feed other districts with our staff and training. A lot of questions arise around special education, early intervention, and professional development. Yes, those may seem like large numbers to some, but that is because we have only just begun to start giving our teachers and support staff what they need to be able to intervene with our youngest children at the first sign of need. By intervening at the most critical time in their lives, we can start a new trend. Do you remember the slideshow from last year when they showed the number of IEPs broken down by school? I do. That is etched in my brain. The number of IEPs at the high school level dramatically jumped. Those learning disabilities didn't just appear, those students struggled for years without proper intervention. Scientific studies show that early intervention prior to grade three has the most positive long-term impact on student education. If we want higher test scores for our district, we must invest in early intervention and support all levels of learners. We will not be able to help our above-average students shine if we do not help lift our struggling learners. But if we choose to invest in our students now, we will begin to see the number of IEPs drop as they progress in school. With all of this, we'll gain three main things: better test scores, less students on expensive IEPs, and less expenses that are associated with new teacher hires. I'm gonna be a hundred percent transparent with you. I have voted against teacher contracts and budget in the past. I voted no for the same misinformed reasons being spread around today. I did not truly understand what was going on in our schools and the challenges our district faced. I thought just like so many others, if our test scores are low, why are we giving them money? Again, this year inflammatory rhetoric is being spread and the way discussions are going are not representative of what our district stands for. We teach our students Cares and Pride, and we should all try to live up to those standards or current board members, our current board members and those running should be holding themselves to the standard as they speak about representing our district as well. I have done my research, lots of research, not just about what our test scores look like compared to surrounding districts, but more importantly, why they look like they do and what is needed to best support learners of all levels and increase test scores. I got to the root of the problems by asking questions and getting involved. I was short-sighted for far too many years and I am glad that I have done my homework so I can make an educated decision at the polls this year. I hope you will join me in supporting these articles. Thank you. If you don't mind, she, I don't know if everybody knows what Cares are. I know she did talk about it a little bit, but she wrote a little something about what Cares mean to her. So if you don't mind, she would like to share it out.
Well, you've already done...
And in support of.
Over five minutes, how much more time you talking?
She just had, it's like a minute.
Oh, you've got a different speaker doing it?
Oh, she, yes.
Oh, you're up.
She wants to share.
Hi, my name is Reece Dunn and I'm talking about Cares. Me and my school are working on Cares. The letter C stands for cooperation and it means to get along with others. A stands for assertion, standing up for what's right. R stands for responsibility, doing the things that are right. E stands for empathy, that means to think about other people's feelings. S stands for self-control and self-control means to keep calm and stay cool. Our teachers don't only teach us Cares, but also follow Cares. This is what makes our school great and I believe our teachers deserve a raise.
Hello.
What's your name?
Hello, I'm Samantha Vaughn and I'm from Newton, New Hampshire. I am a Memorial Alumni Student and I represent the future of our community. I think my teachers and elected officials who have taught and modeled Cares and support Sanborn Pride.
And I'm Crystal Brown, also from Newton. I represent the community, I'm a Girl Scout Leader, soccer coach, PTO President. My daughter, like she said, she represents the future. When it comes to this time of year, I don't like that I'm hiding facts that are going on when explaining the election to her and the process and what's being said. I don't like them getting messages from parents feeling like they can't become an informed voter because they're wading through so much stuff that is borderline relevant. So because of that, I support the teachers, I support staff and school elected officials, and I really appreciate all of those who represent and model Cares and Sanborn Pride for our community.
Thank you.
My name is Flya Wokel and I'm from Newton. I'm a middle school student, I've been on the student council since the third grade and am an honor student. I think my teachers and elected officials who represent Cares and Sanborn Pride. I am the future of our community and all of the community is impacted by your thoughts and behaviors. All the teachers that I have and had in the past were amazing role models and showed and continue to show how important it is to represent the values our school district has. They strive to make sure that we get the best education possible and never make us feel unimportant. Teachers like this make students like me and that's why we are Sanborn and show Sanborn Pride. Thank you.
Hi, my name is JJ Defio and I attend the middle school and I'm a member of its respective student council. I moved to this district in the fourth grade. Ever since I did, the teachers and assistants have helped me become an honest student and an honorable person through exerting qualities like cooperation and responsibility. They act as role models and show us students how to discover the world, assert ourselves, and act with respect and empathy, all while having self-control. They empower us to take risks and do personally and truly care. We hold all of these values highly and it shows within our practice of Sanborn Pride and Cares methodology. Our teachers exert these too. Our adults in our lives show these qualities. Most of our community members act within these qualities. While voting this year, please be mindful if, or who, or what you are voting on wholly, totally, and honestly respects, displays, and/or represents these behaviors and values we hold so high. I thank you for your time.
My name is William Flaherty and I'm the president of Sanborn Middle School Student Council. I am here tonight to support our teachers under Article Four. I have been in the Sanborn School District since first grade and am now in my eighth grade year. All the teachers I have had in elementary and middle school have been great. I know a lot of the teachers work long hours outside of school and they deserve this increase. Each of our, each of our teachers in the middle school has around one hundred students that they need to prepare and correct papers for. I can't even imagine to correct multi-page papers for one hundred students and I know a lot of this grade, grading is done at night and on weekends. I believe that the teachers deserve the increase that is on the ballot this year for all their hard work and support of the students. Thank you for your support of our teachers.
My name is Megan Flaherty and I am the president of Memorial School Student Council. I am in fifth grade in Ms. McLaughlin's class. I'm here tonight to support our teachers. We have the best teachers at Memorial School. They make learning fun, they run clubs after school for us, and they really care about their students. I feel our teachers work really hard for the school and I feel like they deserve an increase. I hope everyone will support the teachers' increase on Article Four. Thank you.
Hi, Barbara Monroe from Kingston, New Hampshire. My family and I moved here about seven years ago and we just love this town. There are many things we do love about it. One thing I don't like is this time of year because I really don't like the divisiveness. I'm tired of seeing the same people writing the same letters to the Carriagertown News, so I pretty much don't read those anymore. My son recently relocated up here with his family. So I am a parent of a junior here at Sanborn High School and also a grandparent for a kindergartner at Baky Elementary. And he is really loving his teachers. He says all his teachers are so nice and spend a lot of time with him. I work full-time, I'm a director of clinical services at a home care company in Massachusetts, so I'm a really busy person. But I also volunteer my time here at Sanborn High School, I am the president of the PTO. My daughter is class president of her junior class. She's very active with student council. She is a part of chorus, she is part of the Sanborn Theater Troop. I'm gonna remind everybody to make sure to come see the musical coming up, March fifteenth, sixteenth, and seventeenth here at the high school. But I am a community member, I represent our community, my child represents our community, and she is the future of our community. I support the teachers, the staff, the school board, elected officials, and candidates who represent and emulate Cares and Pride the way that my daughter does and my grandson is learning to do now.
I'll go ahead, that's fine. Hi, I'm Tammy Gluck from Newton. I'm a proud parent of a soon-to-be Sanborn graduate. And my son graduated in the class of twenty-fourteen. I served as a interim school board member and I've been on numerous parent volunteer boards and committees throughout the nineteen years of my involvement. You just heard tonight from some real cute stakeholders, students, talk about Sanborn Pride and Cares. Those things are built into the framework of educating the students here at Sanborn. And I'm gonna ask right now, at graduation, that's coming up in June, which I think you're gonna vote on a date, so I'm really excited to hear that, that any of the elected officials from the school board and the budget committee that are elected or re-elected, they might think twice about attending the graduation if they don't believe in and emulate and act with Sanborn Pride and the Cares contract that our students adhere to. I'm also gonna ask, should any of our elected officials for the school board or the budget committee do attend graduation, they won't make comments and joke amongst themselves during the ceremony about where students are going during graduation and what colleges they might have for post-grad, as happened at the twenty-seventeen graduation. That graduation is a celebration of success for our Sanborn students. And that kind of behavior that has happened in the past is just disrespectful. We need school board and budget committee members who have our students' best interests at heart, that support our staff and all the stakeholders in the community, candidates who are aware of the need to budget wisely, to never lose sight of what is in the best interest of our children, unlike others who sometimes just believe in their mission of their group and the candidates that they're supporting. If you want to continue to watch our district move forward in a positive direction based on some of the things we've heard tonight and keep our property taxes, our property rising and the property taxes under control, I urge you to vote for candidates that represent all the stakeholders, including the students, and for people that believe in public education. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Karen from Newton, but I'm actually reading this for someone else, for Rachel Burt. It's from Newton, a letter that she wrote, so I'm standing for her. My name is Rachel Burt, I live in Newton. I wanted to take a moment to thank the board and the BudCon for supporting our teachers and support staff by supporting more in articles four and six. We can all think of a handful of teachers in our lives that had a profound impact on us. For my oldest child, a two thousand fifteen Sanborn grad, it was LeAnn Jewels. For my daughter, who is a freshman at UNE, she names Amy McDougall, her second-grade teacher. Lindsay Jordano. Thank you. Her sixth-grade teacher and Kevin Conant, Evan Sizonski? Thank you, okay. And Erin Cass here at the high school. My youngest son, a current junior named Kevin Welsh and Paul Butler in special ed at the middle school. And Josh White and Kathy Gio... Vanna, thank you, here at the high school. I graduated Sanborn in ninety-three and one of my most impactful teachers sits here on the board. My brother, who was a few years behind me, agrees with me that Mr. Broderick had a huge lasting impact on us for which we are grateful. I think as important as earning what they deserve, it is absolutely necessary to cultivate a culture of appreciation, a sense of belonging and stability for our teachers, particularly from the board and BudCon down to the community. One of the perks of living in the town I grew up in is that I know several of my childhood friends' parents who are still here. Imagine my alarm when one of them called me this Sunday afternoon after a trip to the dump and told me about a conversation that some of the people here on the board and a few BudCon members in the audience here had had with him. He was told, "If you want higher taxes, vote for that guy," while pointing, while pointing to a board member, Mason. This wasn't a one-time occurrence, but was overheard a couple of times by several different people, including town employees and residents. This is not what it means to support, to exhibit Sanborn Pride. I truly hope that regardless of the outcome of this election, you all figure out how to work together without kibitzing about each other and pointing fingers. I hope that you are able to communicate your needs and dissatisfaction personally before taking it to the newspapers and social media. And most of all, I hope you start exhibiting the Sanborn pride that you demand of our students. Thank you for your time.
Okay, moving on.
I would like to make a comment. I don't have a section for which I can. I like to make my own public comment or my own school report.
Is this, wait a minute, is this you as a school board member or you as a private citizen?
This is possibly my last board meeting, so I think I have the justification.
No, 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 I just need to know whether you want to stand at the podium.
I'll sit right there.
I'll sit right there. So this is a school board member. I understand what you're saying, Cory, but that's actually the procedure we have established long ago, you know.
Two meetings ago, I was sitting and made a comment, that's okay. Those who know me, Cory Ma- okay. So yes, I will start off in typical Cory A. Mason fashion from Newton, New Hampshire. I will start with a quote, "Leaders take all the blame and give away all the credit." This will be one through minutes. "I am honored to have sat here and served the students," so this is really weird how I'm doing this. "I have been honored to have sat here and to serve the students, staff, leadership, and community members of Fremont, Kingston, and Newton over the last two terms as one of seven school board members. During my tenure, my personal understanding of my individual role and my individual responsibility in student achievement, fiscal responsibility, school district performance, and culture, both as a community member and as a school board member, has grown exceptionally. I wanna thank you all for being patient as I grew personally and professionally to serve our communities in the best interest of increasing district performance and student outcomes while being fiscally responsible. I first, the first opportunity of growth that I experienced was when I recognized I'm a part, I am part of a team of eight." Let me restate that. I first, my first personal opportunity of growth is when I experienced, when I was, when I recognized... is when I experienced, when I was recon- when I recognized I was part of a team of eight. Yes, I'm not a single elected official acting solely upon myself with my own personal agenda, but part of a team of eight and for which I am just one of the seven elected board members working in partnership with that guy's superintendent of schools. I know this term is new to many of you. During my two terms, I have been part of three different team of eights that we represented and presented to our communities. The first team of eight was during my first term, for which I was elected into. We could be viewed as a rubber stamp. Then, in order to remove that label and grow our team of eight, we aptly became dysfunctional. The current board for which I sit on and for which everyone here represents part of the team of eight, we, we grew to the next level and for which you've heard me say earlier, as a team of, a functional board. I'm hopeful that I will be sitting here with the next label and for which my personal and professional experiences can positively impact and continue to grow our team of eight and become an exemplary board. Google it, look into it, there actually exists out there. What have, what have the last two team of eights that I've been part of been successful at together? Remember, each one of us, we represent one vote. If there is something adopted, such as the budget establishing of a new committee, to the funding of the blue lights, to the vestibule security updates, our collective votes dictate the outcomes of endorsement. A sampling of our team of eight's success was the introduction and adoption of the community partnership goals to the SS Subcommittee, to the creation of budget goal structures that even the budget committee is working with, I worked with Annie, the return of public forums, which we saw this evening, technology in the boardroom, seminary colla- campus collaboration with Kingston Town officials, we made the most headway in years. Nezdek Studies, establishing a definition of student, the definition of student success. Policy compliance, student outcome goals. What more can we achieve together and what goals have I declared in my hopes of being re-elected? Sticking to Article One now. Obviously, if you've read my website, I want to go into strategic planning, accountability plans, and community partnerships. And I'll just actually just highlight two sentences of my thoughts of community partnerships. "The Sanborn Regional School District is the largest employer between all the communities for which we all represent and the students for which our student athletes represent. It is necessary that we deepen our relationship with the elected officials from all of our communities as well public safety divisions to address fiscal challenges in declining enrollment." There. Moving on. Question, why do I want to come back? Let me start by-
Excuse me, Corey.
Really? Really?
You, 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 in my opinion, all right, just, I'm going to speak for me. I don't know who the other board is. Well, two things. One, you're over the three minutes, but aside from that, when you start saying why I want to come back, that's to me down close to electioneering, and that is the one thing I believe I like, meant to say anyway at the beginning.
So I support voting for myself on Monday or Tuesday.
I understand that, Corey, but we've got, to me, you're on the fine line, and I really am apprehensive that we don't get ourselves jammed up.
Okay.
Okay, so, I mean, you've been over the three minutes.
I welcome anyone to read the next few pages. Have at it.
Yeah.
Michael Giordano, I'd love for you to read those.
Hey, Mike.
Do you, uh?
I am retired.
You want to sit over there, Mike? Mike was our last-year senior, uh, school board rep. Yep. Oh, it wasn't last year, it was, it's been two years. Time goes by when you're old. Okay. Uh, gradu- okay, new business? I think we've got graduation.
Well, I, I have to say that I'm pretty excited to say that it's pretty rare to get to this point in the year. I'm afraid I'm going to, I'm going to curse this, to have three snow days at this point. So-
What do you have for a date?
I'm going to say June seventh, and I'm going to ask the board to approve June seventh, but March is a winter month in New England. And our, it's funny because I put out the newsletter on Friday and saying March is a winter month, and then we had a snow day the first day back. So I'm just like, I, I, right now, we have, we have a little room to grow, even if we set it at June seventh, so let's do it.
So to the extent possible.
Yeah, I would say I'm just looking for a, a, a motion and a second and a vote to have the graduation date be June seventh, and if we have a fluke five snow days, I'll have to come back and see you.
Move to approve.
So moved by Larry, seconded by Jim. Discussion? All in favor? Unanimous?
Mr. Stack has texted me twice, wondering if this has been passed.
Thank you, guys, thank you.
Yeah, we get all why. Did you get out early?
You want to get out of here, you're like- I appreciate the June seventh.
Yeah, all right.
I love teaching seniors second semester because we got out early. Okay. Overnight field trip?
Oh, yeah, so we have a, a, an annual overnight field trip, Springfield, Mass. Um, the teacher advisor is the wonderful Key Club person, Michelle Wheeler, who's helped us out, by the way, with the daycare needs for the district at night, um, for the last couple of meetings. So I just wanted to acknowledge Michelle in her wonderful effort to make sure that parents could be here even if they have young children at home. Um, that's been a really nice thing, and I, I even want to say that we tried to compensate Michelle for her time, and she refused to accept that. So I just need to really acknowledge that that's, she's a real asset to our community. So she's going to go two-hundred-and-forty miles on a bus for the Key Club District Educational Conference. Um, she'll probably, uh, the Key Club will pay for it, and she'll have assistance from probably the PTO and the Kiwanis. That's what she's hoping for. Um, so if everyone's, uh, willing to approve this, the date is, uh, I'm sorry, these forms. The first, yes, April, Friday, the fourth and fifth of April.
Do board members go on any of these overnight trips? Haven't, haven't been on a field-
Well, they brought me the one to the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame last year, and I have to say, I tried to sign up for that. I got shut down. Um, but no, I, I, I do, I do not know the answer to that question, but if you'd like me to find out, Ellie, I'm sure they'd love to have you.
Carrie, I, I've been on a couple of overnight-
Uh-huh, okay.
Move to approve.
Okay, motion to approve, as Tammy, Larry seconded. Discussion? All in favor?
Sort of.
Can we call it six and a half?
But that's a yes, that's a yes.
Thank you, Ellie, and everyone else.
Policies.
So unfortunately, the bulb has died on the projector tonight, and, um, I'm wondering if you want to go through these quickly or wait till-
I want to go through them quickly because-
All right, let's try that. Um, these are policies you've seen before, and the committee reviewed them again tonight. The wellness policy, student awards for educational purposes policy, JM, and the new developmental delay policy. Um, we did discuss some of the issues that came up at the last meeting, and most of the issues, apparently, the attorneys have said the wording is as required by regulation. Um, so there isn't anything we can really change, uh, with these policies. It's just a matter of approving them. I'm not sure if you still have questions about these three policies. Yep.
I have questions about the developmental delay policy. Is there a New Hampshire School Board Association policy that corresponds to this?
There is not.
Okay.
And I asked that question too, so I'll, I'll, oh, I'm sorry, Pam, can I answer that? You want to, no, I'll let Pam do it. She's got it. She asked the same question at the meeting.
They have no sample draft and no code for this policy.
So where, where is this coming from?
It's coming from the, one of the best special education lawyers in the country, Jerry Zelen.
But is this something that's been implemented in New Hampshire, or?
Yeah, um, the, these are great questions, and I just want to be clear that the purpose of this policy is because we already have students identified under developmental delay, and the policy is designed to protect us so that if we have a student who's been referred and they don't qualify, that there'll be a clear guideline as to what is a developmental delay, so that it, it gives the, the special education staff more protection in making these recommendations.
I just need some more explanation because when I read this, it sounds like developmental delay is a category when they don't know what the developmental problem is.
That's right, it's designed for very young children where it's difficult to pin down what the exact problem is, so it wouldn't be appropriate to label the child, um, with any specific learning disability. So you're one-hundred percent correct, that's exactly what it is. So it's for the kid who's in, uh, the student who's in, like, four, five, six years old that isn't quite ready for psychological evaluation or cognitive testing, but is, is not performing, it's, they're significantly behind their peers. So typically, what happens, if you read the policy carefully, at around nine years old, they have to be recoded. And so by that point, their brain, their prefrontal cortex has developed enough so that psychological evaluations can be applied, and they can make a more specific determination about their learning disability. And it even says in the policy that this can only be used as a primary identification, which means that you can't have a speech issue as your primary and then a developmental delay as a secondary. It can only be used as the, the, the first initial, um, um, uh, diagnosis. I just want to be clear for the board and everyone here, this is already happening. We have almost forty students who are identified and coded on developmental delay. The policy was designed by this lawyer to protect us from someone filing a lawsuit saying, um, "Why did you identify this student and not my child?" We don't have anything in writing to clarify that. So Pam, Pam asked some really great questions. We spent forty-five minutes on this at the previous meeting, and, and that's kind of why I'm up to speed. Jody Guterman, our Director of Student Services, came to the meeting and explained all of this, and, and I, I had the same questions when she brought it to me. And the thing is, is that most policies come from the NHSBA, but there are times when our lawyers recommend policies to protect the district too. And, you know, um, I've had Diane Goro call and comment on policies before when she looks at a policy for a, a legal matter. Uh, it, it's not, I, I have to say that Jerry Zelen is a fantastic lawyer, and he's just trying to protect the district. So there's two ways to do this. One is to just continue doing business the way we are. That runs the risk of having a parent say, "Why is my student not identified but yours is?" That's one, we could do that, it might be okay. Um, that's one lane this could go down. The other lane is, we adopt the policy and it's clear, and then the parent says, "Well, I don't agree with you that my kid doesn't have this," and then they contest it anyway. That could happen either way. The, the purpose of the policy is just to clarify what a developmental delay is and what the criteria is for that, so that it's clear for parents and the people making these determinations.
That's my next question. Behind this policy, is there a very clear criteria? Because there seems to be a trend in society where they want to label everybody. Is there a very clear criteria where a kid gets put into this category and another one doesn't?
Yeah, well, if you read the policy, it gives you-
Well, I've read about the testing.
Yeah, the testing is what does it.
So in order to, to be given this label, you have to meet certain criteria within this testing.
You do. You do, you, this is a very ser- developmental delay isn't just a, a generic term. It, it seems like it could be a generic term, but it's, it's a special education term that's used by professionals for students that are significantly behind their peers, but they can't quite pin exactly what the problem is yet. So again, we already have forty students who are developmentally delayed. We just don't have a policy that clarifies what that is.
Thank you.
Yeah, and you're asking, and I just want to be clear, I love the fact that people are asking these questions. These are, these are really, um, important things to talk about because honestly, special education is where the buck really stops in public schools. The, the, the level of laws that go into these policies, it's unbelievable. Uh, every little term in there has a law behind it. It's a very dense policy. It's short, but there's a lot behind it, so, thank you.
Corey, is it simply a true statement that this puts a, puts us in a better position and not be sued?
It, essentially, yes, but it's very difficult to, you have to remember, no matter how you do these things, it could go either way, but this is the best. Our lawyer feels that this is the best direction ahead.
At least provide a, a wall.
Something.
To, to-
Right now, we have nothing.
How did we go, sorry, Phil?
So we grilled Ms. Guterman for a good thirty minutes or more about this policy, um, because I wasn't clear on your regular learners versus special ed learners, and now we're adding in another gradation of learning challenges. Um, and also, differences aren't disorders. I mean, kids are unique, and I think the psychiatric profession and the diagnostic manual in the past has proven that they have miscategorized behavior that isn't a disorder, it's simply different behavior. So I was really concerned about this policy, and I don't like the title "Students with Developmental Delays" because it stigmatizes kids to be called that, but that is the jargon that is used. I'd prefer "Students with Developmental Variability," for example. Um, and some kids come to reading later than others, and I was really uncomfortable with this entire new policy. But the fact is, it's for young kids, grades three to nine. It's identifying where the ages-
Ages three to nine.
Uh, sorry, grades, uh, oh, yeah, ages, they're very young kids, ages, I put grades, sorry. Ages three to nine, it's not to, it's not to be used for special ed, but simply to look for indications based on specific criteria that they may be having some challenges, some struggles that need attention. And, um, often, these can be addressed easily before they are diagnosed as special ed or special needs.
Well, developmental delay is technically a special education identification, and that's why it's so important to clarify what is or isn't. But it's for early learners, yes.
And it's like intervention.
They have specific areas they diagnose or assess. So I am a bit more comfortable with the policy, but not entirely comfortable with it because the assessments, to me, there's some subjectivity involved, possibly. Um, it would be good, it's good to know there are teams working together to assess the kids and not one individual.
The law requires that.
Maybe a different opinion from another expert. Um, so I think, based on Ms. Guterman's, um, presentation, that we should move to approve the policy.
Yeah, I'll move to approve.
Second.
Further discussion?
Are we going to approve the other two policies?
Seeing that he did it one at a time, I was-
All right, that's fine.
Is this first read or second?
All in favor?
It's first read.
This is the first, are we approving it for first read?
Just first read.
That's unanimous?
First read.
Yeah. So just to clarify, I only ask for first and second read if it's, uh, what Will Phillips from the NHSBA calls a P policy, which is priority. It means that we're really behind, and it's some, almost like, he, they are rare, right? So this policy will be reviewed again at the next meeting if anyone has any further questions, and honestly, if folks really have any further concerns, we could always invite Jody to be here. I just didn't want to have her sit all night.
How about JM?
Still moved in JM, second?
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, how about JLCF?
Wellness.
Still moved.
There's one typo we corrected, but as amended.
As amended.
Okay. Jim seconded? Discussion? All in favor? It's unanimous, folks?
So I'll just quickly say that, uh, we have a load of policies coming your way because we spent three days working on policies over break.
Oh, wonderful.
So you're going to get the Ds and Es, and then the Js are coming.
Should we have a meeting just to do policies?
Uh, we might need to do that.
Yeah.
So we'll talk about that more.
Okay, time for second public comment. I think we probably exhausted ourselves in the first. No, Michael, no. For a year, I had to put up with you.
Put up with or enjoy?
Okay, now, Michael, there's a change. Does it stay with the agenda?
I believe so, from six, from six to seven. Is that part of the agenda?
All right, you know, I, I used to harass you when you were here. Now I'm harassing you again.
I just figured, you know, I, I reinstalled Facebook. I saw what it was going on, and I figured I'd come address. Um, so I just wanted to, while I know that this is the, the best public setting to talk to the superintendent and the board at the same time, um, I've already discussed with a few elected officials some of my concerns with, um, Warren Article Eight, um, which I know, I know, Tammy, we've talked a little bit about it. Um, for the future of the school district, I was one of the students that was here when the eighth grade was moved into the high school. And there were a whole lot of negative repercussions that that had, I think, on faculty and students. So it was a concern to me, not really knowing with the future of redefining, or not redefining, but re- redefining what we look at from kindergarten to sixth grade and seventh grade to senior year of high school, um, what that sort of looks like without having any plans as to what repercussions that Warren Article may have down the road, repercussions that Warren Article may have down the road, especially in regards to where we're housing students. So that's my only concern with it, I just wanted to express that while I was here. So try to come to the meeting when we present the plan, because Article Eight isn't tied to the move of the middle school. Yep. They're separate, they're separate things. Yes, yeah. So you missed the whole show earlier. So I just want to invite you to come, come back when we present the plan, or call me, I'll sit down with you. Sure. It'll be early April, okay? I'll come all the way from Boston, just for you. Hey, you know, it's a whole hour. Yeah, thank you. Happy to help you out, Mike.
I have a razor if you need one, Mike. I haven't changed, you know?
Hi, Heather Ingham, Newton. I just want to thank Dr. Brown, who had mentioned that not all developmental delays are disorders, and I think that's really important, that we're strength-based and looked at that. And I just had a quick question on the developmental delay. Will this look at how we will, they'll qualify, so will it be under medical, social, emotional, or cognitive?
Well, it's important to recognize that there really are fourteen criteria for identification for special education, but the developmental delay policy, as I understand it, and I am speaking for Jody at this point, and this is getting to the edge of my expertise in that realm, because that really is her forte, my understanding is that the purpose of this policy is for students that it's been difficult, my son had a speech issue, and it was causing him intense frustration. So once we got him diagnosed and got him help for speech, he was fine. There are students that come to school and present one way, but may have an issue that we aren't aware of. And I won't go into specifics, but I've worked at the K-2 level for a number of years, and the idea of the developmental delay policy is to say, we don't, it's kind of like not otherwise specified.
So those enigma kids.
It's the enigma kids that we're still trying to figure it out, but they also haven't developed cognitively enough for us to really administer. Certain psychological tests are not valid when they're really young. So we want to wait until they get a little bit older, but they need help. And I will say that Jody made the point, and I continue to say this to everyone, if we had proper intervention prior to special education in academics, these, some of these kids would fall in that zone, and we wouldn't even need to go there. The goal would be to help them out before they need a hand and then get them back in regular ed, and that's, that's the vision of the future for Sanborn.
Are you asking a question, advise us to work on something?
I just know through IAPs, they fall under certain categories, so I was just curious which category the developmental delay would fall under.
I would, I would, feel free to read the policy and email me.
Okay.
Okay, I'd be happy to help you out. Yep.
Okay. Do you believe we're three minutes ahead? I don't know how that happened. Okay? Other business. Next meeting agenda, Phyllis, I have the policies and also that donation the finance committee was talking about. Okay? Anything, anybody else? Okay?
We do have a non-public, but...
Well, yes, next meeting, okay, so that's on the agenda, you've got that. Okay, the next Sanborn Regional School Board meeting will be held Wednesday, March twentieth, twenty nineteen, from six to nine PM at the library, Sanborn Regional High School. The second voting session of the annual school district meeting will be held on Tuesday, March twelfth, twenty nineteen, from eight to eight. Our moderator for Kingston is here, Ellie, at the Swayze Gym. Anything you would like to say about that, or anything, just in case?
Vote early and vote often.
All right, welcome to Chicago. Welcome to Chicago.
I'm a native Bostonian, I can say that.
Yes. Okay, so we're going to be at the Swayze Gym in Kingston, Sanborn Seminary Campus, and in Newton, the Town Hall for Newton Voters. Now that concludes this, we now have a non-public. Larry, what do you got to say?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I've moved that we move into a non-public session for RSA ninety-one dash A, colon three, roll maneuver two, item C and D.
All in favor? Roll call, Larry. Um, Larry?
Larry, yes.
Ellie.
Oh, you must be curly, right?
Yeah, that's unanimous. Boys and girls, the class isn't over yet.
Can we go to the bathroom?
All right.